Good morning. Good morning, everybody. It is 9:33. I'll call this meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors to order. And please ask the clerk to call the roll to establish quorum and read the Metro Cable statement and meeting procedures.
Good morning. Supervisor Serna?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Frost?
Here.
Hume?
Here.
Desmond?
Here.
And you have a quorum. This meeting of the Sacramento County Board of Supervisors is Cable Cast Live on the Metro Cable 14, the Local Government Affairs Channel, on the Comcast Consolidated Communications and AT&amp;T U-verse Cable Systems. The meeting is closed caption and is webcast at metro14live.saccounty.gov. Today's meeting will be repeated Friday, July 28th at 6:00 PM on Channel 14. The Board of Supervisors fosters public engagement during the meeting and encourages public participation, civility, and use of courteous language. The Board does not condone the use of profanity, vulgar language, gestures, or other inappropriate behavior, including personal attacks or threats directed towards any meeting participant. Seating is limited and available on a first-come, first-served basis. Each speaker will be given two minutes to make a public comment and are limited to making one comment per agenda item or off-agenda item. Please be mindful of the public comment procedures to avoid being interrupted or disconnected while making your comment. To make a comment in person, please fill out a speaker request form and hand it to clerk staff. The chairperson will open public comments for each agenda item or off-agenda matter and direct the clerk to call the name of each speaker. When the clerk calls your name, please come to the podium and make your comment. If a speaker is unavailable to make a comment prior to the closing of public comments, the speaker waives their request to speak and the clerk will file the speaker request form in the record. The clerk will manage the timer and allow each speaker two minutes to make their comment. To make a comment by phone, dial 916-875-2500 and follow the prompts to be placed in queue for a specific agenda item or off-agenda matter. Clerk staff will transfer each caller into the meeting and you may be on hold for an extended period of time and your patience is appreciated. You may also send written comments to boardclerk@saccounty.gov and your comment will be routed to the board and filed in the meeting record. If you need an accommodation pursuant to the Americans with Disabilities Act or for medical or other reasons, please see clerk staff for assistance or contact the clerk's office at 916-874-5451 or send us an email at boardclerk@saccounty.gov. Thank you in advance for your courtesy and understanding of the meeting procedures.
Okay. Thank you. Flo, Supervisor Serna, can you please lead us in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, infinite, and just as for all.
Okay. Thank you. We've got to work on our synchronization and, of course, everybody in the room. But thank you for participating. And good morning, everybody. Thank you very much for being here today. So we're going to start with, we have a full agenda and something, for those of you who have not been in the board chambers, want to let you know a little bit about how we're handling off-agenda public comments. And for those of you who've heard this several times, thank you for indulging me. What we're trying to do is we have several timed matters on the agenda and we need to try to stick with those because we have scheduled people coming to testify on various matters and interested parties on these matters. So for off-agenda items, we're keeping the public comment for items, again, not specifically on the agenda, to 30 minutes in the morning. And if we can't get to everybody, we will take them again in the afternoon at the end of the timed matters. But I'm hopeful we can get through most of the, or if not all, of the off-agenda public comment in the first 30 minutes. So with that, I will turn it over to our clerk to call the first person for public comment.
Okay. Our first person is Ryan Harris.
Oh, okay.
Morning, Ryan.
Good morning.
Mr. Chair, did you want to make an announcement about the video screen?
Yes, I was, Metro Cable said, well, you know, if you make an announcement about it, more people will just notice it. But we have a little glitch in our screen over here on the side. I apologize for that. We're not able to get that repaired this morning. It will be repaired for the next meeting. But of course, it's on two screens here. Thank you. Thank you, Ryan, for moving that over. So.
Thanks. Sorry.
Pretend it's not there if you can.
All right. Good morning. To the union people behind me, I have good hope that you guys are going to get what you guys are here to get. Reason being is I believe it's going to come when they want to pass another law that they don't want anyone here for. If you look right here, you'll see when they pass military weapons, there's nobody in the audience. So when you guys get the approval, that's when you got to question why it happened. This officer here, he even said, he said, "I'm not familiar with that equipment, so I can't say the implications of what it's used for." It was military weapons to be used on civilians. But this board didn't know either, and they approved it. Also, I mentioned it before, Kennedy Patrick, your district has the highest crime rate, the highest death rate, yet you have the lowest attendance here. I wonder if there's any relation to that. I get you out for medical reasons, but if that's so, you know, it's elected position. You should bow down, let someone hold the position that could really take care of the people. Another reason why I say that is when you are here, you joke about their safety. In this right here, at the end of this, military weapons being used on us civilians, he jokes about it and says, "Oh, I think it's used to make popcorn," given a lot of people in your district have been getting popped. Go ahead and play this video. And this was taken here.
Well, what would you use something like that for if you did have it?
I am not familiar with that equipment, so I can't say.
It's really new, I think.
The implications of what it is used for. So I think you'd make popcorn with it.
I'm asking a serious question. It is a real weapon, so, okay. You don't have it.
I'm not familiar with what use it's being employed.
Okay.
So you guys approve weapons that you don't know what use it's being employed? You don't know, heck, you comment about being made popcorn out of people?
That's terrible.
Thank you, Ryan. Okay. And Madam Clerk, I see, I think, we have 16 signed up in chambers. So let's close the queue for in-person.
Yes, we will close that.
And how many do we have on the phone at this point?
And we actually were able to, yeah, the 16. And we do not have any on the phone right now, so I'll go ahead and close that.
Okay. Close the queue and then we'll get through everybody in chambers. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Our next is David Capazano.
Hi, I'm David Capazano, and I would like to thank the Sacramento Board of Supervisors for your hard work and dedication. And I'm here on behalf of our group that comes here regularly to give Florence Evans a big thank you for getting out the agenda early. So we greatly appreciate that. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you to our clerk as well.
You're so kind. Thank you. You're welcome. My pleasure. Charles?
Good morning. I spent a good amount of time at Miller Park over the weekend trying to help people that weren't being helped by the city or county and observed and was reported to a lot of health conditions within the state or safe ground communities. And I think that, and they told me I'd be able to come in and check some temps and check some of the sanitation that goes on there by multiple employees. And they kept telling me to come back the next day, come back the next day, come back Monday morning, and they aren't letting anyone in. And I think that we need the county to kind of do an immediate, just drop-in inspection of what's going on there because what I've heard and what I've observed from outside the fencing area is that the water is unsafe. Obviously, the temperatures were unsafe over the weekend because of the heat, but, you know, safe drinking water is a necessity. There's also the issues of how the porta-potties are being maintained and how hot they are. From outside, I was able to temp gun a couple of them and, you know, in the 107-degree heat, they were 140 degrees on the outside. So the inside of a porta-potty is going to be insane temp-wise. And then, you know, we need to figure out how safe the water is and also the shower temperatures because they have some portable shower units there. And I think we need to know whether those are actually hot or not and people are actually able to wash themselves in sanitary conditions and whether the food that is brought there is being maintained and is healthy to eat. So I'd like for the county to make sure that some health inspectors go out there today or tomorrow and actually can come up with a report of how unsafe it is or it might be safe. I mean, it's possible. I doubt that the hose, from what I've seen, the pictures of the hoses and stuff like that that are being used to fill water jugs that aren't being sanitized every day, I doubt that it's possible that they're actually up to county standards for outdoor food safety. But it'd be nice if you guys just sent someone out there.
Thank you. Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. So, and based on what was just communicated to the board about concern at Miller Park, I'm not familiar with all the details in terms of the working relationship at that site between the city and the county in terms of implementation of the agreement between the two agencies. But I would like to have Emily Palcon, our Director of Homeless Services, maybe follow-up with at least a phone call over to the city to ensure that there is some kind of coordinated effort to make sure, especially during excessive heat during the summer, that we're working proactively to make sure folks are safe and water's clean and basically, you know, all the things that were mentioned by the speaker.
Thank you. We will do so.
Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I agree with Mr. Serna. And maybe a report back, and it can just be in the form of written correspondence to the board. What are our processes and procedures as far as inspections of all of these sanctioned encampments when it comes to EMD? Do we even, I mean, it makes sense. I mean, if we're inspecting restaurants and all that. So I'd just like to have a report back on what we do regarding inspections.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Supervisor Kennedy. Okay. Our next speaker.
Joseph Wilson. Joseph Wilson? Okay, he's waived. And so Madeline Kaufman?
Good morning. Good morning. My name is Madeline Kaufman. I just want to speak in representation of the contract that's being done right now for IHSS workers in Sacramento County. I want to give a friendly reminder of what has happened with your neighbors down the street in San Francisco County. They started contracts, negotiations in February, they ended in June. They have a five-year contract and they're looking at giving their people $25 an hour. So I think that maybe it'd be awesome if you guys would kind of consider what you're putting your people through and why, ask yourselves why it's taking so long. And they're asking for $20 an hour. So it's just kind of interesting to me that it's taking so long and that it's just round and round and round about of asking for pennies on the dollar for what these caregivers deserve. So, thank you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Jesus?
Good morning. My name is Jesus Figueroa Cacho. I've been a long-term care provider in Sacramento for about 30 years. I love my job, but it's difficult work that deserves the same respect, dignity, and quality benefits that other county workers receive. The treatment of IHSS workers is unacceptable. The county current proposal does not, is not enough to change that. Cost in Sacramento are exploiting, rent is outrageously high, grocery, gas money. These economic challenges are deeply impersonal for a lot of us. I recently, I was dealing with eviction for about six months. I don't wish that on anybody. I called the State of California, Norton, for legal services was not provided for me. But I thank God I was able to fight my case and I went. So we're here to ask for justice for all because the county workers had 36% of increase while you guys have a quality life, dignity life for your families. And we, as IHSS workers, we can't have that? I don't think we deserve to live in a tent or being evicted. We can't pay our rent every month. A lot of us don't even pay our rent every month due to the low income that we're getting. We're here to get 20%. So for everyone who's sitting in this here, please touch you hard. We have family, but we want to spend the time with them. We have children who needs to go to college. We need to give a quality care for those people who can't take care of themselves. You know, life can change to anybody. Because I have one of my best friends, she had a car accident, that now she can no longer take care of herself. Some of us have to take care of her. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll look to our county exec, and we haven't had a status update to the board in closed session for some time. Will we be receiving one soon?
Yes, you will. I don't have the date yet, but it's coming soon.
Okay. Thank you. And just so you know, because these are labor negotiations, we first have a discussion in closed session, the board, before we make a decision on the contract. But, okay. Connie?
Yes. Good morning. Good morning to you all. Hi, my name is Constance Hill. Connie is my nickname. I've been a care provider for about several years. I've been providing for a dear friend of mine currently, Irma Echo. Unfortunately, she will not be here. But I just want to share some information. Being a caregiver, it truly is a joy of mine. I've always been a people person. I love just being involved with people in general. In order to stay within Sacramento County, we know, we're just kind of asking, you know, $20 would be appropriate so we can take care of the necessities to live and thrive in Sacramento County. I believe in Sacramento County. Sacramento County is a beautiful county. But it would be a blessing or suggestion for the county to pay, you know, or at least meet us. You wouldn't suggest this for a county worker, you didn't pay for your raise by cutting your health care. Health care is extremely important. I am a mid-aged woman and I'm going through some personal, womenly issues. But taking away the health care is essential. Every little bit matters. And with the amount of money that we have, it's just not sufficient. Without the proper health care coverage, I wouldn't have access to the nutrition and the health education classes I need. Someone who recently diagnosed with pre-diabetes beyond the classes, I'm starting to think about what I'm going to do to pay for medication. Do you know many caregivers in Sacramento County currently can't afford the medication? Recently surveyed our members and found that three of five providers go without the prescription due to costs. If the county cuts our health insurance cover, raises, this number will continue to grow. The county can't afford to pay for our health insurance and raise the IHS wage to $20 an hour. All while you receive the increase that you receive. Our clients, our communities, our loved ones, we all will require some form of care at some point in our lives. It is time that Sacramento County passes a strong contract to make sure that there's enough providers to meet their growing demand for care well into the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Connie.
Ms. Cherie?
Good morning. My name is Cherie, and I've been caring for my grandmother for five years. Although the work is challenging, I love what I do because every day I get to make sure my grandmother is fed, clean, and loved and cared for. I know, I know I get to make sure, I am proud that she is going to live the fullest. But with inflation rising in costs in housing, food, literally everything else, it's become impossible to make ends meet on IHSS, even with the other jobs I work. There's no reason for, besides the fact of IHS wages and poverty wages, every month I struggle to pay my rent and utilities on time. The problem has gotten so significant that I worry I might become homeless if it doesn't change. The horrifying thing that this, is I struggle, is not unique to me. Home care providers all across Sacramento are struggling to stay afloat in this economy. In fact, a recent survey revealed that nearly 75% of home care providers in Sacramento experience housing insecurity. It has come unacceptable for long-term care providers to worry about roof over their house where Sacramento supervisors give themselves 36% raise. And to make matters worse, the problem to cut our health benefits for three months, really? Home care providers dedicate our lives to make sure our senior people with disabilities in Sacramento receive that the care they need to survive and feel safe. Did you know that IHS realizes our health care plan is underestimated for IHS worker? It tries to take health benefits today. There's nine-month wait to get benefits. But we've been coming here for eight months, and eight months too long. Caregivers need a relief and they need your support now. We'll keep coming back to fight and stay strong until we get what we want. Thank you.
Thank you.
Brayden?
Brayden here. Oh, thank you.
Oh, I can hold it. Thank you. Good morning. Good morning. Good afternoon, board. I'm happy to be standing with SEIU 2015 today, although it's frustrating to have to keep coming back and doing it over and over due to the unfortunate incompetence of this board. I am an IHSS recipient. I was born with cerebral palsy and my wife is my caretaker, provider, and we have four kids. And what I want to speak to is how fiscally responsible it would be of this board to take care of our IHSS workers, SEIU 2015, and give them what they deserve. I know what it goes into to take care of somebody with a disability because I have a disability. My wife, every day, gives me a shower, gets me in and out of bed, makes sure my special food is prepared, et cetera, all the while while looking after our four kids. And that's something that's just really not talked about enough is that IHSS workers have families that they need to take care of as they're choosing to do a career that makes them feel good about themselves because they're helping somebody with important lifesaving care. But they literally don't know if they can do the job anymore because the job does not pay enough to survive, which is disgusting. At a time where this board gave itself a 36% raise and then continues to look at this people in the crowd and not give them what they need and what they deserve that not only would help them, but it would help our most vulnerable disabled population as well. If we don't give IHSS workers what they deserve, soon they'll become homeless and then disabled people will become homeless. And then we'll have to be talking about doing even more and more shelters for people when we could just, next week, finally give IHSS workers a livable wage. So as a recipient whose wife is my provider, I ask that you just finally, please, have some morals and give these people what they deserve. Thank you very much. I'm in solidarity with 2015.
Thank you, Brayden.
Okay. Desiree?
Good morning. My name is Desiree Rojas, and I'm the president of Labor Council for Latin American Advancement. We're tied to both nationals, AFL-CIO, and Change to Win. I first want to say that after hearing the testimony of Mr. Murphy, I have to say this in Spanish first, no tienen vergüenza. You guys should be ashamed of yourselves, okay? Let me tell you why. If you're not doing your job in these roles, then you're just filling a seat because you know and I know that you have stakeholders and you have partners. And if it's money, then you should be going to them to make this work now. The rent is too high, the food is too high, and we're coming to a point where families are going to start walking into your districts, into supermarkets, to demand food because they're hungry. We have come to this point. People are overworked, overworked. Yes or no? Overworked and almost broken. We have come through a pandemic and that alone should be moving you in the direction of having to save and to help families in communities. And what is taking so long? You give yourself a 36% wage increase? We know that that's a part of the playbook, but what's also part of the playbook is resistance and the fight back. And that's going to come very strong if you guys do not start making some faster progress. But I would also like to say that this program, as we know, next to Social Security, is the strongest program in our country that is holding people together. This program is not funded or taken care of the right way, then I think we have, there should be a bigger question on the table here to say, is the city, the county of Sacramento actually managing this program correctly? Are you doing your job correctly? We have San Francisco and neighboring counties that are able to manage this program correctly. So what is it, what is the problem? The problem is, is that, is that everybody coming in here consistently to speak before you is not moving you, and we have to ask why now at this point. We have to ask why. Because if there's enough money to build a beautiful center, like Golden One Center, and there's enough money to invest in all of this development, then surely you can figure out a way to make up the difference of whatever's holding you up to pay these workers $20 an hour.
Ms. Rojas, can you please wrap up your comments?
Thank you.
Okay?
Thank you.
And, okay, and final, I'm going to say, to hear the testimony of Mr. Murphy, if that is not enough and you continue on this path, you mark my word, what's going to happen in your communities. Families are going to start walking into your supermarkets and they're going to start asking for food. Because this program is not doing what it should be doing enough fast enough. So please, get to the negotiating table. And I mean, I know you're there, but please, sign this contract right away.
Thank you.
Thank you.
CT Weber?
Let's move on to Irma.
Irma?
Okay. No Irma?
I'm a care provider. She's not feeling well today.
Okay. Did you want to say something for her?
No.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Move on to Tracy.
Good morning.
Good morning.
You have heard from SEIU 2015, so I don't need to talk, you know, more about what they're going to be sharing in terms of their experiences. But what I do want to talk about are the people that they actually care for. And I've pretty much buried every parent I've ever had. And I will tell you that the most important thing to them is to pass in dignity where they want to live, with people who love them, that are taking care of them. And if we don't compensate and take care of those caregivers, then we do a disservice to everyone. So I am just here to say, please, sign. Thank you.
Thank you.
Dylan?
Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is Dylan, a proud son of an SEIU nurse, a member along with Desiree of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement Sacramento Chapter. I'm proud to be standing here in solidarity as one of the co-chairs of the Yolo County Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. For the past four years, I've been working in disability services, doing employment services, so working side by side with so many of the IHSS workers, particularly in Yolo County, that are working to keep people well, who are in position, who have developmental disabilities. And, you know, these are people, as previous speakers have said, are working multiple jobs, are struggling to make ends meet. And I just want to contrast that, you know, position that these people are in in their lives with just not too long ago, us saluting these people as essential workers, applauding their work on the front lines of an unprecedented international pandemic, putting their life at risk to make sure that people who are elderly, people with disabilities, get the care that they need and deserve. We, again, not too long ago, applauded, saluted all of these essential workers that are truly essential, but now, when the time comes to put our money where our mouth is...
My name is Dylan, a proud son of an SEIU nurse, a member, along with Desiree, of the Labor Council for Latin American Advancement Sacramento Chapter. I'm proud to be standing here in solidarity as one of the co-chairs of the Yolo County Chapter of the Democratic Socialists of America. For the past four years, I've been working in disability services, doing employment services, so working side by side with so many of the IHSS workers, particularly in Yolo County, that are working to keep people well, who are in position, who have developmental disabilities. And, you know, these are people, as previous speakers have said, are working multiple jobs, are struggling to make ends meet. And I just want to contrast that, you know, position that these people are in in their lives with just not too long ago, us saluting these people as essential workers, applauding their work on the front lines of an unprecedented international pandemic, putting their life at risk to make sure that people who are elderly, people with disabilities, get the care that they need and deserve. We, again, not too long ago, applauded, saluted all of these essential workers that are truly essential, but now, when the time comes to put our money where our mouth is, crickets. So I really, you know, implore this board, given its public responsibility, given its responsibility to care for the least of us in this community, to make sure that those people who are doing that care have the fair contracts, the wages, the safe working conditions that they implicitly deserve. Thank you.
Thank you, Dylan.
Kim?
Good morning, board. My name is Kim Ivan. I proudly represent, as an executive vice president, the men and women behind you, 30,000 in Sacramento County alone. And I'm here today to underscore the urgency in which we need you to exercise the fullness of your leadership in this moment. I understand, and I believe, that you want to ensure the survival and the vibrancy of critical services in this county and deal with what you are hearing from these caregivers, but we can't wait on it. We need you to act and exercise that leadership now. We are in an absolute crisis, and here's what it looks like. 85% of home care providers in Sacramento work multiple jobs to make ends meet. 60% are unable to afford the cost of prescription medications. They care for other people; they cannot care for themselves. 75% face difficulty paying their mortgage or their rent. You heard the stories already. And close to half, which is morally criminal, have food insecurity, having to rely on programs like CalFresh and food banks to feed their family. And this is coupled with the fact that 2.1 million approved care hours went unused in this county. So folks like Dylan, who are sitting there waiting to have their dignity realized and to be able to live full and independent lives, their hours are basically, their care hours have been cut because we can't recruit or retain the very people that afford him the dignity he deserves and everyone else the dignity they deserve. And I believe that you need to send a strong message to the folks representing you at bargaining that that's not how you want to lead in this county, that you want to make sure that you are leading people through this crisis and to the other side so they can live dignified and full lives. So please, take the first step. Get that group of folks that represent you at that table to lead in a way that truly you want them to represent you. Let's get to $20 in a contract.
Thank you, Kim.
Okay. Maria?
So this is the Community Cat Program. This was from Bradshaw, as you guys know, because they were backpaid $88,000. This is being passed out every day to multiple citizens in the county because they don't want to take responsibility for taking in a kitten that is two pounds or over, or any friendly or unfriendly cat. So basically, what's happening is this is going out to many people, and for example, if somebody has a kitten or a cat that needs to be spayed or neutered, or that they want to take to the shelter, they're not able to, so they have to wait, hold the cat and wait to make an appointment with Community Spay and Neuter Clinic. The problem with this is this is taking away spaces for trappers like myself and others that rely on this program to get the community cats spayed and neutered here in the county of Sacramento. So I went to the Bradshaw Shelter, and I wanted to speak to Nit Bedsworth because I wanted to see, why are you pushing all these cats that you're not accepting to this program? And this is for trappers like me who rely on this program. She wouldn't talk to the public. She said the only way I can get ahold of her is by phone and email, which I still have to, I'm waiting a response. I was able to speak to the supervisor of Bradshaw Shelter, and he said that he was going to have, talk about this at their next Wednesday meeting. That was a month ago. This flyer is getting passed out left and right every day, and the problem is that us feral trappers don't have enough space as it is. So now we have these people that don't have nothing to do with trapping, are using this program as well. The city of Sacramento, or in the county of Sacramento, needs more spay and neuter clinics and more vets. This is unacceptable. I am tired of having to talk to people that I'm helping in the community, and they have no resources. I'm trying to help them out with their, getting their colonies fixed, and there's nothing, honestly, I'm to the end, right? There's no answers that I can give them. We need more spay and neuters because these cats are going to suffer because of this. We are all exhausted, and this isn't Bradshaw, the employee's problem. This is because the director doesn't want to take accountability and find a way and work with you guys to make more spay and neuters available.
Thank you, Maria. Supervisor Kennedy?
Excuse me, Maria. Can you go ahead, if you can spare that? Could you give that to the clerks so that we can see what it is you're talking about? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Ted Simak.
Yes, thank you.
Good morning, board supervisors. Supervisor Desmond, Chair. I wasn't going to plan on speaking today, but I want my brothers and sisters back here from SEIU 2015 to know that 4,000 U.P. members stand in solidarity with you. It's a shame to hear. I think I emailed you all a couple of weeks ago. I know you received my email. An injury to one is an injury to all. What they're suffering at the work sites, at the homes, and at the bargaining table, I can relate to, because our members suffered as well. To hear from these brothers and sisters behind me that you want to strip their health care to pay for a raise, it saddens me. It angers me. You talk about fixing the homeless problem. You don't fix their contract, you're adding to the homeless problem. You don't fix their contract. I hear about the raises you all received. Show some love back to these folks. What's missing here is folks seem to have, it's lost on folks, that a lot of county exec management receive raises. These are $200,000, $300,000 jobs. These folks are making $15 an hour. Think about that. While you eat at Chris Ruth's, they can't afford a Happy Meal at McDonald's. Think about that. It's a shame. It's a shame that more folks aren't here. It is a shame. And not your members, yeah, they're working, but more of the public, more elected officials, to hear what's going on here. My members struggle. CalSal's is coming. You're not ready for it. I met with DHA management. They're not ready for it. CalSal's has been in discussions since Ann was the director over at DHA, and they're not going to be ready for it on the implementation date of October. And what is that going to mean? Benefits will be delayed to many of these folks, their families, my family members, who rely on assistance to survive. Clean up Sacramento, but you have to start internally. My email said anti-union, and that's the first time no one responded from this county. And what I see here, and experience in here, and talking to these sisters and brothers, is anti-union. To strip away their health care to supplement a pay wage is inhuman. Inhuman.
Ted, can you please wrap up?
I appreciate you taking the time. I know, and I have the [inaudible] management, but please, do the right thing. I pray that you do the right thing. Thank you.
Thank you, Ted. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. I apologize, and my previous role negotiating was only done with the POA and police management, and so this is obviously a much bigger nut to crack, but I feel very disconnected from this process, and I have no idea what the sentiment of my colleagues on this dais are. I feel like this has gone on a very long time, and it doesn't seem to be coming to a fruition, and I don't know that we have had our temperature taken as to what we would feel is appropriate, whether there are austerity measures we can take in other parts of the budget in order to come to a reasonable resolution. But I, and again, if I'm speaking out of turn or inappropriately, maybe this is by design that I'm removed from the process, but I just feel like I, for one, want to try and get to some sort of solution that puts this issue to bed.
And I agree. I mean, I think we're all, obviously, everybody is very eager to see that happen, so sooner rather than later, we'd like to have that in closed session, have that discussion. All right. So, thank you, Supervisor Hume, and to all the IHSS workers here, you know, thank you for being here, and thank you for your advocacy, and most importantly, thank you for the work that you do. And I'm sure we will see you again in a couple of weeks. Hi. Madam Clerk, any phone off agenda?
We do not have anyone on the phone.
So now we're going to move on to our time agenda. We'll just wait a couple moments for folks. Thank you. You can get us all in there. We're going to move on.
Okay.
Go ahead, yeah. Okay, Madam Clerk, so now we'll move on to our consent agenda. Thank you.
Okay, for your Consent Matters, items 2 through 52, I just have one note for you for item 5. This is to adopt ordinance amending Sacramento County Code, Chapter 2.01, Title 2, relating to the county clerk recorder fees. You waived reading on this on July 11th, and that's all I have for my notes.
Okay, thank you. Then I will turn to my colleagues to see if there are any comments or questions about consent items. Supervisor Kennedy?
Thank you, Chair. I would like to call out item 23.
Okay. Let me read that into the record for you. Item 23 is the Bradshaw Road at Jackson Road Intersection Improvement Project.
Thank you, and I've had an opportunity to speak to a property owner in the area. I've also been in consultation with Supervisor Hume, and I'd like to have this pulled and continued to the next board meeting.
I would second that motion.
Thank you.
Please vote. Well, do we have any public comment on this item first?
We do not have any public comment on this item.
Please vote.
There's someone in the audience.
Oh, you know what?
This is the motion to continue this item. You still would like to, okay, please?
I would like to apologize.
No, that's okay. And please introduce yourself.
Good morning, Doug Osee, 4013 Park Road. Appreciate the board's consideration of this. These intersection improvements are just hugely needed. I do want to bring one item to your attention that I hope perhaps, within the context of the continuance, might be addressed. I don't know how to put this on the screen so you can see.
Set it on the white pad.
It'll project on the screen.
Okay. So you'll see this circle right here, which denotes the...
Madam Clerk, excuse me. Can you put the screen here?
Clear our vote screen, please, Flo, so we can see the projector there. Thank you.
Okay, so I've circled the southwest corner of the intersection. So this is Bradshaw going this way, and Jackson going this way. I own the property here, with the exception of the subway. The geometric design of the intersection envisions a very, very short queuing lane for a right turn onto southbound Bradshaw from eastbound on Jackson. And while I'm not a traffic engineer, I do drive these streets a lot. In fact, your level of service would probably go up if I'd just stay home. But the queuing distance at this location, in my opinion, creates a traffic hazard. You will have traffic moving east on Jackson at high rates of speed. You have a very short queuing, dedicated queuing lane here to turn southbound on Bradshaw. You may end up with a conflict where cars back up into those higher-speed lanes. My suggestion to you during the term of this continuance is to revisit the idea of creating this queuing lane to be significantly greater. There would be impacts on the subway store. Those are unavoidable, whether it happens now or later, but I did want to bring this to your attention. This is a potentially significant safety issue due to the shortness of the queuing lane for southbound, for, excuse me, for...
Eastbound.
...traffic turning southbound on Bradshaw.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
And Mr. Chair, if I might...
Yes, yes, yes.
Mr. Osee, I am, you know, in complete agreement that this place needs to be fixed, and this continuance is just to give an opportunity for one of your neighbors to have more conversations.
I've talked with that neighbor. I'm supportive of the continuance. Let's take advantage of it and revisit the safety issue, too.
Thank you, sir.
We have our DOT Director, DOT staff is here, so...
I have visited with Ron and with Matt at length about this. They don't agree. I want to be clear about that, about the queuing distance. It's not personal, it's just they don't have the same view I do, so.
Okay.
All right.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume?
Supervisor Kennedy covered it. I just want to say, while we have this continuance, please negotiate with both the southeast and southwest property owners to hear their concerns. Thank you.
And it looks like we do have another public speaker that made it in on this item. Good morning.
Good morning. Hi. Annie Marzal, I am the Doug Osee's neighbor, and we appreciate the continuance. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. Now, please vote on the continuance of item 23.
Mr. Kennedy and Mr. Hume, okay, unanimous vote.
Okay. Any other consent items for discussion or comments? Any public comment on consent?
Yes, and now we have two public comments for item number seven. And let me read that into the record. That's the termination of the contract for B.T. Collins Youth Detention Facility, replace personal alarm device system with 3D Technology Services.
Good morning.
Good morning. I am Frank Peterson, the CEO of 3D Technology Services, a company that has been doing business in Rancho Cudova for over 20 years. I am addressing addendum item number seven, proposal to terminate the county's contract with 3D to install a personal alarm system for the B.T. Collins use facility. I spoke at the last meeting, an objective termination of the 3D contract for claim delayed, as the county proposed to do. I understand the board was deferring the action on the matter to allow the parties to further explore resolution without default termination. We have received, we have not received outreach from the county, and I have not had a chance yet to talk to a board member, although I have communicated through email. Given that the proposed action may destroy Sacramento County business and that there is no urgency to act, I ask that you defer action further until I can meet with a supervisor and until we have further discussion with the county staff to attempt to reach a resolution. As a reminder of the issues, the county approved the 3D proposed plan to install a personal alarm system and recommended the manufacturer. However, the county then refused to allow 3D to implement that approved plan. That refusal made configuration much more difficult and time-consuming, and made results less accurate, which caused distrust in the system by the county. When the county expressed concern about delay, 3D increased our crew size as directed, but we were not permitted to implement our scheduled recovery plan. 3D was able to largely complete the system backbone at a value of hundreds of thousands of dollars, for which 3D has not been paid. In summary, county personnel refused to allow us to install the system as planned, but now blame 3D for delays that they caused. Clearly, delay is not the concern as staff proposes to wait almost a year before resuming work on the installation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And then Jennifer.
Supervisor Hume, did you want to comment now or after?
with 3D to install a personal alarm system for the B.T. Collins use facility. I spoke at the last meeting, an objective termination of the 3D contract for claim delayed as the county proposed to do. I understand the board was deferring the action on the matter to allow the parties to further explore resolution without default termination. We have received, we have not received outreach from the county, and I have not had a chance yet to talk to a board member, although I have communicated through email. Given that the proposed action may destroy Sacramento County business and that there is no urgency to act, I ask that you defer action further until I can meet with a supervisor and until we have further discussion with the county staff to attempt to reach a resolution. As a reminder of the issues, the county approved the 3D proposed plan to install a personal alarm system and recommended the manufacturer. However, the county then refused to allow 3D to implement that approved plan. That refusal made configuration much more difficult and time-consuming and made results less accurate, which caused distrust in the system by the county. When the county expressed concern about delay, 3D increased our crew size as directed, but we were not permitted to implement our scheduled recovery plan. 3D was able to largely complete the system backbone at a value of hundreds of thousands of dollars for which 3D has not been paid. In summary, county personnel refused to allow us to install the system as planned, but now blame 3D for delays that caused, that they caused. Clearly, delay is not the concern as staff proposes to wait almost a year before resuming work on the installation. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then Jennifer.
Supervisor Hume, did you want to comment now or after? Good morning, Jennifer.
Good morning. I'm Jennifer Dower, outside counsel for 3D. I'm addressing agenda item seven as well, and I also spoke on this issue at the prior board meeting. Termination for default is a draconian measure that should only be taken in the most extreme circumstances. It indicates that a breach of contract was so serious that the county cannot obtain substantially what it contracted to obtain. A termination for default jeopardizes a contractor's existence, particularly when the contractor is involved in public contracting. Here, the proposed termination would threaten the existence of a Sacramento County employer. As we explained at the last meeting, you're being asked to approve a default termination for delay. My correspondence before the last board meeting and comments at that meeting highlighted that the county has not taken responsibility for county-caused delays, including refusal to permit 3D to install the system as recommended by the manufacturer and as 3D planned and as the county approved. The county also prevented 3D from continuing its work, which would have allowed the installation to be complete by now. The county now proposes to wait to complete the system for nearly a year. Clearly, delay does not warrant termination of 3D's contract and potential destruction of its business. We understand that the county decided that it no longer wants the system it contracted with 3D to install. However, instead of terminating 3D's contract for default on the pretext of delay, we request that you defer action on this matter. This will allow the parties the opportunity to negotiate a mutual termination with reasonable compensation for the equipment installed and work performed by 3D. We ask again that you defer action to allow this reasonable resolution of this matter. Thank you.
Thank you. Supervisor Hume.
Thank you, Chair. Just for full disclosure, I have been in email contact with the representative from 3D and also received an update from county staff. And the situation is muddled because of a surety bond that is employed on this project. And as I understand, there's been extensive negotiations between the two parties since going back to January, February of this year, leading up to this point. And so, Mr. Gasaway, I see you sitting back there. If you wouldn't mind coming down just so I could ask you a couple of questions, because I think in the email explanation that I received forwarded to me, there was discussion about changing this from a for cause to a for convenience, which obviously would have reputational impacts to the contractor. But that was precluded because we were not able to find a completion contractor to finish the work that had been started. And so essentially, we are starting over from new. Is that a correct assessment of the situation?
Jeff Gasaway, Director of General Services. I'm going to have to defer to Dionne, County Counsel, Dionne Marine. She's been negotiating this on the county's behalf and has been involved in all the discussions. But I believe you are correct.
Okay, then while I have you at the podium, just a quick question. It was my understanding that when we continued this item at the last time it was heard, that was so that county staff and the contractor could potentially explore options to amicably terminate without causing harm to their reputation. And as I understand it, that did not happen. Is that because those conversations had already run their course prior to this coming to the board?
I guess we didn't necessarily, I didn't necessarily get that from the last board session. I thought it was moved so that we could answer questions for board members. And we met with Supervisor Desmond.
So then let me rephrase the question. If we were to give that direction, is there any fruit that to be had with furthering the negotiations? And I guess now would be a good time for County Counsel to maybe...
Thank you.
Dionne Marine, Deputy County Counsel, Advisor to DGS. At this time, based on our last settlement negotiations, we are very far apart. A lot of it centers around equipment that was purchased by 3D that our county, you know, our department feels like it cannot use because of warranty issues, because a lot of this equipment's pretty old right now, because the contract started in 2021. I mean, I guess I'll never say no to another offer or counter. I did communicate the county's position prior to the board meeting. And as Mr. Gasaway said, after the last board meeting, I thought it was just to answer questions from Director, I'm sorry, Chairman Richmond, Desmond, so.
So let me ask you a question with a fine point on it, and I maybe shouldn't ask this publicly, but I will. Now, I've kind of forgot where I was going to go with that question. I apologize. So there's two things here, essentially, cost and reputation. And if we are far apart on the cost, reimbursing for equipment that we can't utilize because nobody else wants to warranty the work done by another firm, that's one issue. The second issue, obviously, is being terminated for cause is something that stays with that contractor as they bid future jobs. Is there a way to settle the second issue, recognizing that we're too far apart on the first issue?
Not that I'm aware of right now, because the two are linked.
But certainly, excuse me, Supervisor, I mean, certainly, the contractor, as part of the negotiations, if the contractor is willing to negotiate something on the price and agrees to terminate out of convenience versus out of necessity, I mean, that could be part of the negotiations. Is that correct?
Yes, that has been part of the negotiations.
That has been part of the negotiations.
Chair, I don't know where you want to go with this. I feel like we're making sausage from the dais at this point, but I did want to explore the issue a little bit more.
If the board would like, we can certainly look into what Supervisor Hume suggests and also that Supervisor Desmond echoed. I think the issue is going to be if we terminate for convenience, which we certainly have the legal ability to do, we're still going to have the issue of cost. That can be negotiated afterwards. If the contractor prefers that way, method, I'm certain that we could look into it. The issue is if we don't reach a resolution, then their, I guess, only recourse would be litigation to recoup or to settle that dispute.
And is that cost to the county or cost to the contractor?
It would be cost to both, because we would have to defend it and they would have to prosecute it. But certainly, if they'd prefer that method, because it wouldn't then harm their reputation, that's something that I think could...
It sounds like we might, we're probably going to end up there. If we take this action today, we're going to be incurring some costs. I mean, I'm fine if I want to continue it again now with a little more specific, I guess, direction. I mean, I think that was my understanding as well, that there would be some additional conversations with the other side to see if we could reach some kind of settlement here, resolve both those issues, cost and the nature of the termination.
And if we do that, I would just look to the contractor and his representative to say that you're not going to be made whole on this, so figure out what's important to you and what you want to walk away with in the negotiation.
So, being said, we'll go ahead and pull the item today and...
Well, we'll make, I'll move to continue it. How much time would you need, do you think, to have these discussions?
I think, I think it's better if you do, if we just drop the item, because they may not come back with the same recommendation. I think that's what Jeff was trying to convey.
That's where I was headed with it. We would bring it back at a later date.
But you need a motion from us to drop the item.
The motion to drop the item, yeah.
So it's still moved.
I'll second.
Let's vote on this. Okay. Thank you. So there will be those discussions.
Ms. Frost.
Yes, and I would say we will be back, though, before September, because the job is going to be rebid. The design is starting now.
Right. Ultimately, we need to resolve this so we can move forward. I mean, obviously, yeah.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. Okay, any more public comment on any other items? We have some young people waiting to get their awards and resolutions.
No, we do not. And so I'll go ahead and close the public comments for the consent.
Okay, I'll bring it back to the board for a motion on the remaining consent items. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I actually have a question on one of the consent matters. Item 38.
Okay. I'll get there for you. Item 38 is the authority to execute loan commitment with Donnerfield Senior LP and Eden Housing.
Thank you. So I'm not sure who's going to be best equipped to address the question, but it does occur to me that this is certainly a project that I am supportive of. But because it is utilizing Mental Health Services Act funds, actually a fairly considerable amount given the total, I'm curious to know whether the city or the county receives the credit for arena purposes.
I believe since the development is in the city of Sacramento, the arena credit goes to the city. But of course, we will have the 17 units of MHSA reserved for MHSA that will be available countywide.
So I would like our planning staff, I'm looking at Mr. Fonte right now, I'd like to maybe understand a little bit better, maybe it's a legal question when it comes to the use of funds that are administered by the county, not necessarily just Prop 63 funds, but any funding that is, you know, under the authority of the county when it's used for the provision of below-market-rate housing in an incorporated part of the county, what the, kind of, the legal basis is for the credit going simply to the city's arena accounting. Because, again, based on this example, if we didn't have the county support for this, then it's questionable whether or not it gets developed. So I think it's a, kind of, an interesting aspect to what we're all trying to do, which is maximize the provision of moderate and low and very low-income housing, regardless if it's in one of the seven cities or the incorporated area. But we're all scrambling to look under every cushion for, you know, the prospect of developing more below-market-rate housing. And it just occurred to me that, given this example here today, it might be worth exploring a little further.
Yeah, and happy to do so. I've wrestled with similar questions in the past, but not precisely this one, so I'll coordinate with Mr. Givens and Smith and Ms. Powell's Maze and have that conversation.
Great. Thank you very much.
Very good question. We want to make sure we, certainly in this county, gets credit for it. I mean, I assume we're all extremely supportive of this, but... Okay, looks like no other comments, and we'll bring it back to the board for a motion on the consent items.
Move consent.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, that brings us to our one and only presentation, unfortunately, Supervisor Kennedy. I will step down and provide this.
So item 53 is the Presentation of Resolutions in Recognition of the Sacramento County 2023 History Day Competition.
Dr. Bob, and the, you want to have everybody come down now or just you?
Just me initially. I'm going to give a little introduction.
Okay. Well, first, I will, I'll kick it off and just introduce this item. We're here to celebrate Sacramento County History Day and recognize three young people in our community for their research projects. Sacramento History Day motivates youth to discover and enjoy the study of history by cultivating an interest in a research topic of their choice. It also encourages youth to act as historians, uncovering primary sources of information, building historical context, and forming historical interpretations, which results in students developing a deeper perspective and greater understanding of their chosen subject matter, as well as becoming experts on the research topic, which I know you all are now. Every year, History Day frames students' research with an historical theme that encourages them to focus on a specific aspect of a historical period or event to bring history to life, as opposed to merely just restating or recalling dates and facts. The theme of History Day this year was Frontiers in History: People, Places, and Ideas. And today, we will be awarding three students for their excellent work, and I will turn it over to Dr. Bob to make some introductory remarks. And as you introduce each of the award recipients, I'll present them with a resolution on behalf of the Board of Supervisors.
Very good. Thank you. Just to give you a little overview of Sacramento County History Day, it's a year-long educational program that encourages students to explore local, state, national, and world history. The students use libraries, archives, museums, and oral history interviews, emphasizing both primary and secondary sources. They analyze and interpret their findings and draw conclusions about their topic's significance in history. Sacramento County History Day is part of the National History Day Program. Winners or qualifiers from the county competition, generally held in March, progress on to state competition, and state winners go to national competition. In California, all students grades fourth through 12th are eligible and generally apply through their school. Generally, several hundred students participate. Fourth and fifth grades compete in a two-dimensional or poster competition, and sixth through 12th grade consisted of a junior and a senior division. And the projects can be in six different categories: papers, exhibits, performances, websites, podcasts, or documentaries. Each era theme is selected by National History Day. Sacramento County has a special awards component also, which most counties don't, where 10 to 15 sponsoring organizations give awards to students for the best projects that follow a topic they specify. Examples would be Sacramento history, medical history, and Chinese history. This program encourages the students to consider projects they otherwise might not think of based on their textbooks. The Board of Supervisors' presentations today are part of this special awards component. It's organized and hosted by the Sacramento County Office of Education in partnership with the Center for Sacramento History. Should I call them all down?
Call them, call them up, yes, and then we'll present the resolutions.
If you'd all like to come down.
Are you going to say a few words about each...
I can't.
...project, and then I'll present them with a resolution?
We have Jovia Lo. She did a paper, did a paper on Madame Shen Shu Wu, the First Lady of Physics, Revelation, Revolutionized Modern Science. It was a senior historical paper, and she's about to receive the resolution for that.
Congratulations.
Do you want to say a few words about your project? Okay, so my project was on this Chinese immigrant woman who came during the 1930s, and I love using History Day to kind of explore these hidden topics where people don't know so much about these overlooked figures in history. And I'm very thankful to the board and also Bob La Perrier, Dr. Bob, for giving us this opportunity to come here and sort of recognize, like, all the work we did. And I think it's a blast to compete in this competition every year, and I'm really thankful for everything, for everyone involved.
Good job. Thank you.
And I'd like to congratulate Jovia, because this is her second year winning the Board of Supervisors Award.
That's why she's so polished here up in front of the court.
And now we have Medka Kati. His project was automobiles, the devices that changed history. And he'll now receive his resolution, or her resolution.
Congratulations. Everybody's right here. Say a couple words about your project.
So this year, I did my project on automobiles and how they impacted America, like how they started and how much they had an influence on everyday people's lives. So I'm just really thankful to be here. Thank you for the award.
And our last presentation is a project called Frontiers in History: The Wright Brothers' Pioneers in Aviation. It was a podcast done by Arjun Anataraman. Arjun, congratulations.
We're all going to get pictures together, too, so... Our gentleman, please tell us a, Supervisor Serna is a big aviation buff, so...
So my topic was about the Wright Brothers and how they invented the first plane in 1903. So I am thankful to be here to claim my award. So I am thankful to be here to claim my award for my History Day Award.
Is it, can I ask a question, Mr. Chair? So you did a podcast, huh?
Yeah.
So is there any kind of web address that you can give us if we wanted to check it out?
A web? No, I didn't, I do not have a web.
Is it on YouTube or anything like that?
No, I recorded on my computer. I just uploaded the file to the History Day thing. I can, it's not on, like, online. I can try to make it. I don't know where the file is, though, so.
Okay, get it. It was a moment in time.
Yeah, right. Live only, okay.
I'll work on that, because one of my projects is trying to disseminate some of these projects so the public can see them, other than just on the Day of History.
Sure. Very good.
Let's see if we can follow up and work with you on maybe getting a copy of that. Okay, well, congratulations. And any other comments from my colleagues? Here, I'll give this to you. And can we all pose for a photograph with all of you and?
Mr. Chair, if I might, I'm sorry, I was slow with the button. Dr. Bob, I want to thank you for continually doing this. I've been a judge a number of times of the competition, which I encourage everybody to do. It's fantastic and fun. But, you know, you've been a driving force of this for a very long time, and so I want to thank you for your efforts as well.
And I'd like to thank the board for their support every year. It's really great. Thank you very much.
Wonderful. Let's come on in here and take a photo. I'll ask my colleagues to come down and take a picture with you. Why don't you guys move up and go in back? You move up and we'll go back. There you go.
There you go. Okay, one, two, and three. Yes, big smile. Okay, let's let the parents get in the middle.
All right. Great. Thank you. Thank you, parents. Great job, you guys. Okay, so that'll take us to Item 54.
Okay, Item 54 is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Solid Waste Service Charges and Adoption of Resolution Ordering Delinquent Solid Waste Service Charges Be Collected on the Property Tax Roll. You have several of these items in a row, but we'll need to take them separately.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the board. Chad Rennie, Director of Finance here. So as Flo mentioned, we have several items to do public hearings to enroll the charges on the tax bill. The Board of Supervisors is required to have a public hearing for these delinquent utility charges before we enroll them, and the board will adopt resolutions of intent for each of these items on June 13th. The public hearing does allow an opportunity for individuals to comment to you, and the board will be requested to adopt resolutions before enrolling those charges. These charges will go on to our tax roll on August 10th, and my office has authority up until August 25th to remove the charges from the tax bill if the delinquent property owners make payment before that date. This Item 54 relates to delinquent solid waste charges. There are currently, as of yesterday, the numbers have come down a bit from your packet, 7,018 delinquent accounts for solid waste charges and the amount of $3,818,930 that will be enrolled on the tax bills if you approve this item. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Okay, I don't see any supervisors with questions. Any public comment on Item 54? I'll have to open the public hearing. I'll open the public hearing. Do we have any public comment?
No, we don't.
Okay, then I will close the public hearing. Did you have any closing remarks, Chad?
I don't. If there's not public comment, I'll stand, because I've got the next few items as well.
Okay, so we'll need a motion to approve the reso.
So moved. Second.
Okay, motion in the second, please vote.
I'll take Frost and then you. Unanimous vote.
Okay, 55.
Okay, 55 is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges and Adoption of Resolutionordering Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges Be Collected on the Property Tax Roll.
This item, as Flo mentioned, is for delinquent counting storm drainage charges. Presently, as of yesterday, there are 7,115 delinquent accounts and the amount of $617,927 that will be enrolled on the tax bills if you approve this item.
Okay, no supervisors with questions. I will open the public hearing. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
Move the item.
Motion is seconded by Supervisor Frost. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Item 56 is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges for the City of Citrus Heights and Adoption of Resolution Ordering Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges Be Collected on the Property Tax Roll.
This Item 56 is for, as Flo mentioned, storm drainage charges. The County Department of Finance collects them on the behalf of the City of Citrus Heights. There presently, as of yesterday, 1,133 delinquent accounts and the amount of $1,002,815 that will be enrolled in the tax bills if you approve.
Okay, no comments from board members. Open the public hearing. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the board for a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Seconded by Supervisor Kennedy. Please vote.
Unanimous vote. And then Item 57 is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges for the City of Rancho Cordova and Adoption of Resolutionordering Delinquent Storm Drainage Service Charges Be Collected on the Property Tax Roll.
The County Department of Finance collects storm drainage charges on behalf of the City of Rancho Cordova. There's presently 823 accounts and the amount of $77,920 that will be enrolled on the tax bills if you approve this item.
Okay, thank you. No comments. I'll open the public hearing. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Close the public hearing and for a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote. Okay, Item 58 is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Utility Taxes and Adoption of Resolutionordering Delinquent Utility Taxes Be Collected on the Property Tax Roll.
As of yesterday, there are presently 10,576 accounts with delinquent utility taxes and the amount of $169,234 that will be enrolled on the tax bills if you approve this item.
Okay, no supervisor comments. I'll open the public hearing. Any public comment?
No public comments.
Okay, I'll close the public hearing and bring it back for motion.
Move the item.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, last one, 59.
Item 59, you're acting as the Sacramento County Water Agency. This is the Hearing to Lean Delinquent Water Use Service Charges and Adoption of Resolutionordering Delinquent Utility Water Use Service Charges.
Okay, and as of yesterday, we have 2,058 accounts that are delinquent and the amount of $1,889,818 that will be enrolled on the tax bills if you approve.
Okay, no comments from supervisors. I'll open the public hearing. No public comment?
No comments.
Close the public hearing and bring it back for a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, thank you, Chad. Bringing us to Item 60.
For Item 60, you are now back as the Board of Supervisors. Item 60 is the Antelope Property and Business Improvement District. This is a public hearing to renew the district and levy assessments and to continue to July 25th at 2:00 p.m. to tabulate the assessment ballots and take final actions to renew the district and levy assessments for fiscal year 2023-24. The environmental determination is exempt. You'll also be introducing an ordinance to renew the district and levy assessments, waive full reading, and continue to August 22nd when you return in the afternoon.
Hey, good morning.
Good morning, Chair Desmond, members of the board. My name is Vanessa Lieberman, and I am your Special Districts Manager in the Department of Community Development. As Florence said, the item before you today is a public hearing to renew the Antelope Property and Business Improvement District and Levy Assessments. The Antelope P-Bid was originally formed in 2018 with a five-year term and included 96 properties with 61 property owners. That initial five-year term expires on July 31st, 2023. On June 6th, your board adopted a resolution of intention to renew the district for a 10-year term and set the public hearing for today's meeting. The current district boundaries include 98 properties with 61 property owners. Additionally, the recommended actions with, for this renewal, excuse me, for this renewal include the introduction of an ordinance to renew the district as well as an accompanying resolution. There is a proposed ballot measure for 2024, the Taxpayer Protection and Government Accountability Act, that requires an ordinance and includes a retroactive provision for any P-Bids formed or, in this case, renewed after January 21st, or January 1st, 2022, to go back through the hearing process to form via an ordinance. So as a result of this, county staff worked with the P-Big Executive Directors and their consultants to adopt a resolution and an ordinance to comply with the current law as well as the potential future law. On June 9th, 46 ballots were mailed, and as of today, we have received 16. With that, staff recommends that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral public testimony and protests, close the public hearing, and adopt the first two recommended actions, which are to recognize the CEQA-exempt status and have staff tabulate the assessment ballots. Staff will return for the afternoon session to take final action. The law requires that this ballot tabulation is open to the public, and this will be held in Room 304 in the old administration building at 827 Seventh Street, and also can be witnessed by Zoom, and everybody that would like that Zoom link can email Mr. Mike Middleton at this email address to get that information. This concludes my portion of the presentation. I do want to let you know that we have our Executive Director of the Antelope P-Bid, Mr. Chris Evans, and a consultant from Civitas here to answer any questions that you may have. Mr. Evans has asked to speak to the board in the afternoon session after we report out on the tabulation.
Okay.
Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Vanessa. Okay, Chris, well, you'll keep your powder dry till the afternoon, and we'll see how the tabulation goes, of course. Okay, well, then I will first go to open the public hearing on this.
We do not have any public comments?
Okay, we'll close the public hearing. I don't see any comments from my board members. I'll entertain a motion for the first two items to recognize the exempt status of the project and to designate the manager to conduct the tabulation in return.
Second.
Okay, first and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
And we'll see you in the afternoon.
Thank you very much.
Okay, for Item 61, this is County Service Area Number 10, Benefit Zone Number 3. This is a public hearing to establish a service charge within the villages at Elder Creek Unit 1 subdivision.
Morning, Joe.
Good morning, members of the board. Joe Grasic, County Engineering Division. The villages at Elder Creek Unit 1 subdivision is located approximately 1,200 feet south of Florin Road, east of and adjacent to Elk Grove Florin Road, and proposes 277 residential lots. In response to a rezoned condition of approval, a request was submitted to initiate the establishment of a service charge for County Service Area Number 10, which provides trip-reduction services. In response to that request, a notice and protest ballot were mailed to the property owner on June 9th. This item proposes the levy of an annual service charge of $126.88 per single-family residential lot. And if there are no questions from the board, we recommend that the board open the public hearing, consider any written and oral objections, testimony, and protests, close the public hearing, and then direct the clerk to tabulate the protest ballots.
Okay, thank you, Joe. I don't see any comments from my colleagues, so I'll open the public hearing.
No public comments.
Okay, I will close the public hearing and bring it back to the board for a motion.
Oh, let me tabulate the.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Ballots.
Please.
And I will need to read fill-ins, too.
Okay, so we have two ballots. Right?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. And this is for the annual service charge to be levied on the villages at Elder Creek Units 1 subdivision, and the legal owner is Lennar Homes of California, a California Limited Liability Company, and they are in favor. That's ballot number one. And ballot number two is also for the villages at Elder Creek Unit Number 1, and the legal owner is DRPC A7 LLC, Delaware Limited Liability Company, and they are also in favor.
Okay, Joe, I'll turn it back to you to fill in the blanks for the resolution.
That's right, yes. Since there is no majority protest, we request, obviously, that the board adopt the resolution. I will read the fill-ins right now. Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the board received zero oral and written protests. And Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board received two protest ballots totaling 100% of the total number, total amount to be levied, of which 100% was in favor of the service charge and 0% was in opposition to the service charge.
Okay, thank you. Now I'll bring it back for a motion.
Move the item.
Second.
Okay, first and second, please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Thank you, Joe.
Thank you.
Okay, now we're on to Item 62. This is the City-City Affordable Housing Plan Workshop.
Good morning. And I see we've got our colleague from the city out there, Mr. Gallin. Good to see you. I can assure you that you probably won't have any tough questions today from this body. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you. Christine Weichert with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency. In addition, we do have Lisa Bates from Sacramento Steps Forward here, as well as Nick. So, over the past several years, the city and county of Sacramento have made significant investments to increase shelter services and permanent supportive housing for those experiencing homelessness. According to the 2022 Point-in-Time Homeless Count, there were 9,278 unhoused individuals in the county. In the desire to improve coordination, the city and county entered into a five-year partnership agreement to coordinate homeless-related activities. The partnership agreement requires the city and county to work together to aggressively meet the permanent supportive housing needs and develop an affordable housing plan. The Affordable Housing Plan strategies out, follows strategies outlined in the Local Homeless Action Plan, or LHAP, to increase permanent housing and rehousing opportunities. SHRA has taken the lead in preparing the plan and has engaged the Services of Environmental Sciences Associates to assist. ESA has extensive community urban planning experience and very knowledgeable of housing. Today, we are at both the Board of Supervisors and City Council to gather input on the Affordable Housing Plan before it is released in mid-August. We anticipate bringing the plan back to the board and council for discussion and approval in September. I'll now turn the presentation over to Sharon Wages from ESA, who will walk you through the plan's development to date. And at the end of the presentation, we are open for any thoughts and questions you have. Shannon?
Thanks, Christine, and thank you, members of the board. My name is Shannon Wages. I'm a principal consultant with Environmental Science Associates, and I'm happy to be providing an overview today of the City and County Affordable Housing Plan. As Christine mentioned, the City-City Partnership Agreement established a roadmap for city and county collaboration on activities that focus on addressing the crisis of unsheltered homelessness. The city and county both agreed to aggressively meet the permanent supportive and rehousing needs identified in the Local Homeless Action Plan, or LHAP, by finalizing an affordable housing plan. And the Affordable Housing Plan will take strategies from the LHAP a step further by identifying specific activities or actions to accomplish them. Stakeholders working on this plan include the city and county of Sacramento, Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Agency, or SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward. Per guidance from the LHAP, the Affordable Housing Plan focuses, oh, I'm sorry, I don't even have my, oh, thank you. I thought somebody else was moving. I'm so sorry. That's okay. I'm on number three. Okay, so per guidance from the LHAP, the Affordable Housing Plan focuses specifically on two things. One, permanent supportive housing production, and two, rehousing strategies to be carried out by the city, county, SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward. Staff from these partnering organizations met on numerous occasions over the past few months in order to collaborate in developing the plan. In addition to these planning meetings, outreach activities were conducted with a number of stakeholders to solicit feedback on the plan. In June, we met with several community group stakeholders listed on this slide, which include Sacramento ACT, or Area Congrations Together, the Sacramento Housing Alliance, the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness, the City of Sacramento Housing Policy Working Group, the Continuum of Care Board, the Sacramento Steps Forward Persons with Lived Experience Group, and the SHRA Commission. The meeting here today with the Board of Supervisors and later this afternoon with the city council. the City Council are final steps in the outreach process. We'll then be releasing a draft for review, as Christine said, in August prior to public hearings in the fall of this year. And stakeholder input, just to summarize, included requests for the following items to be included in the plan: goals, objectives, strategies, analysis of costs and funding sources, timelines and recommendations. And the feedback was considered and incorporated into the plan. So now, I'm going to walk through the core elements of the Affordable Housing Plan, which is currently in progress, starting with permanent supportive housing activities. So the Affordable Housing Plan establishes two priorities, the first being to increase permanent supportive housing, or PSH, production. PSH is defined in the plan as permanent subsidized rental housing with supportive services for individuals and families who are homeless. And this slide demonstrates current activities supporting production of permanent supportive housing, including both city and county were designated by the state as pro-housing jurisdictions, both have eliminated zoning barriers to PSH development, both jurisdictions reduced fees for affordable housing, an assessment on vacant property is being explored by the city, and SHRA currently prioritizes funding and housing choice vouchers for PSH developments. So the city and county, SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward met on multiple occasions and worked through multiple drafts to identify new strategies for inclusion in the Affordable Housing Plan. So a few of the new strategies to increase PSH production are listed here and include prioritizing PSH projects when any new funding sources come to the city, county, or SHRA, exploring local ballot or bond initiatives, as well as state legislation and federal funding to create new funding sources, and using publicly-owned vacant land for PSH whenever possible. And I want to mention that activities in the Affordable Housing Plan are organized by gap or need, one of which is to increase funding and development of PSH. So that's what these activities on this slide are focused on. Other strategies in the plan address the need for increased developer support and capacity, and the need to innovate and support new types of PSH development. The second priority to be established in the Affordable Housing Plan is to increase rehousing capacity. Rehousing is defined as the provision of time-limited financial assistance, housing search and placement, landlord engagement, and case management for individuals and families who are homeless. Actions already underway include 6,100 individuals are currently being provided rehousing assistance annually through a number of organizations that provide varied services, including housing search and placement, landlord engagement, financial assistance, case management, and stabilization services. The county has also allocated $10 million to their Landlord Engagement and Assistance Program, or LEAP, to help address gaps in services offered by current providers. So in the same manner that permanent supportive housing strategies were developed, the collaborating partners held meetings and worked to identify new rehousing strategies, and these new strategies are listed here and include providing ongoing funding for the LEAP program, connecting rehousing providers with the Coordinated Access System, recruiting and training new rehousing providers, and designing and piloting a shared housing program. So again, following these workshops, a draft Affordable Housing Plan will be released. We intend to bring the Affordable Housing Plan back to the Board of Supervisors and City Council in September for approval. And that concludes my presentation. We are open to your thoughts and questions regarding the plan. We have members of the county, city, SHRA, and Sacramento Steps Forward here to answer questions as well.
Okay. Thank you. I'll start with Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'm not sure who to address this to, but I was curious about the fee reduction for affordable housing that the county employs. I'm wondering if that is proportional to the targets for affordable housing? So in other words, do we have a policy that says a certain amount of fee reduction will be associated with moderate, low, very low, extremely low?
I don't know offhand. I don't know if Mr. Smith knows exactly how that policy is constructed. We've actually had a number of internal conversations about looking at that further. I know the City of Sac, I just learned a month or so ago, has some pretty innovative approaches as to fee waivers for affordable housing that we're exploring further here. But as to the existing policy, I don't know.
Yeah, so my question is really about proportionality. So in other words, do you get a greater value of fee waiver or fee reduction for extremely low versus moderate, as an example?
The short answer is no. The current, sorry, Todd Smith, Planning Director, the short answer is no. The current policy does not include that sort of proportionality as written right now. It is a program that does provide for fee reductions. I believe it currently has a cap on it, though, based on, I want to say, SHRA's multifamily lending guidelines, which has a similar cap of, I think, 200 units per year.
Do we, does anyone here know whether or not other jurisdictions do have a policy that's based on proportionality?
Hi, Christine Weichert again. I can only speak to the city and county of Sacramento because that's SHRA's JPA. The county does offer sewer and waivers and credits, water, and there are things like that that SHRA certifies if the project's going to be affordable, affordable. It's, I believe, 60% of area median income or less, although I think some of them might be 50%. But if you meet that threshold, those numbers of units can qualify for a fee waiver reduction for some of those utility fees. The City of Sacramento goes beyond that and offers basically to waive most of their planning fees associated with affordable housing. That said, I'm sure LaShaw could help me onto this portion. I know the city has to fill behind those fee waivers with their general funds. So while the developer is getting some relief from planning fees, the city is having to fill behind those.
Yeah, that is correct. The city does incur, obviously, forgos revenue, and so that comes out of their general fund to cover the expenses.
Sounds like it's just a straight subsidy, basically.
It is.
It is.
And do we know how much, maybe on an annualized basis, the city's general fund is subsidizing the program?
I believe it's about $3 million a year.
That's exactly what I was thinking.
Okay. I'd like to suggest that maybe we, the county, look at revising the policy or policies around fee waivers or fee reduction to incentivize, because that's the whole point, incentivize or attract the development of affordable housing, and look at the concept of proportionality. Because I think if we get to that level of detail, we can have much more control over the density, the income targeting that we want and that we need based on our RENA needs, since, of course, we all know RENA does make those distinctions in terms of how much we need to plan for based on the various levels of affordability. Thank you.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. Supervisor Hume?
Thank you, Chair. First of all, I support what Supervisor Serna just requested, but I would add on one more aspect to that, and that is to look at multifamily or high-density projects in general in order to incentivize their development as well, because I think a lot of the lowercase a affordability of housing is due to supply and demand economics and the compaction of the market, and so we really just need to be figuring out how we break loose more of that housing type generally, and not so much only focusing on the subsidized aspect. And so with regard to that, I'm going to ask maybe a two-part question, or maybe depending on the answer to the first part, I don't have to ask the second part, but can you walk me through the difference between, say, a very subsidized, low or very low-income affordable housing project versus a permanent supportive housing project?
So permanent supportive housing projects are usually at that extremely low income level, so 30% of area median income or less, where sometimes we think affordable housing is a little higher, 50% to 60% of area median income. But the difference between, let's say, just something that's at rents at 30% income and permanent supportive housing is not only do you have the income restrictions, but you're also providing that wraparound case management. So you're going to have case managers there, you know, maybe one to every 15 residents that are going to help you with everything that you need to get, you know, financially, you know, health-wise, all these, and that's basically the biggest difference. So you're, and with permanent supportive housing, often there is probably going to be a project-based voucher from HUD assisting with that rent for that development and that residence, so it's paying for those increased services that they're receiving.
Okay. And then, is there an eligibility requirement or a targeted demographic? And I apologize, I know I've probably heard the answer to this question before, but it's just not coming to me. Is there an eligibility requirement or a targeted demographic of who can take advantage? And I don't mean that in a prioritiv sense, but who can take advantage of permanent supportive housing?
So I'll start with an answer and see if LaShaw would like to add to that. But as I was saying, most of our permanent supportive housing do require those project-based vouchers to pay the rent, and currently, based on the board's direction, all of our vouchers are for homeless individuals and probably have, almost always have some sort of disability, physical or mental or something. So, so most of our permanent supportive housing developments are, meet those requirements. LaShaw, did you want to add any more?
Yes, that's correct. In fact, if you look at the statistics based on the change that the board made to prioritizing homeless individuals, over 60% of the people who are coming through the Housing Choice Voucher Program are homeless individuals. And Christine is correct in talking about the fact that those are individuals who have some type of disability, and the majority of the people who participate in our Housing Choice Voucher Program, either the head of household or someone in the household, over 65%, I believe, actually have a disability of some sorts.
Okay, but if I heard the wording correctly, that is a standard of probability, not definitely. Is that correct? So it's not a requirement that there has to be an underlying disability in order to qualify for permanent supportive housing?
That's correct. However, all of the individuals that we are serving, I can't recall that we have any that don't have some level of disability.
Okay. And then, is there, and I don't know exactly how to phrase this, but any sort of, you know, continuum or pathway that obviously those wraparound services, if they work, this person is able to move potentially out of supportive housing into maybe a different affordable housing complex or something that allows for that throughput through the capacity that's being provided? Is that a fair assessment, or do we have a mechanism in order to track that?
Well, one of the things that the voucher allows for after someone has been in a project-based situation for 12 months, then it becomes portable. In other words, then they have the ability and the choice, which is, you know, a part of what the Housing Choice Voucher is about, to actually take that voucher and move to another community, or they can stay there. It really is dependent on the client in terms of what their needs are and what their desires are.
And again, apologize for the obtuse question, but is a voucher the same as what's referred to as Section 8?
That is correct. Section 8 is the part of the legislation, but it is, the new word is the Housing Choice Voucher.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate the answers.
Our county exec.
Yeah, thank you. Supervisor Hume, now, I also want to clarify that some permanent supported housing units are partially funded with Mental Health Services Act dollars, and those do have a requirement that someone meets the criteria for serious mental illness.
I think that's the case with one of the ones that we recently approved of the board, that we got state funding for approved. I know we have another project that we're still, you know, keep my fingers crossed, I haven't gotten an update from you on that. But the plan that comes back, when will the plan be coming back to us, did you say?
So we'll be returning in September. I think September 12th is the actual date, but the plan, we want to get that out well in advance of that timeframe so that you have enough time to go over it and read it in detail.
Okay, great. So like, for instance, with, on the permanent supportive housing funding, that'll have all the detail in there about what you expect, what's out there right now, what you expect, what are some additional things we can be working towards, so, okay. So we'll have a lot more detailed questions to ask at that point. Okay. Thank you, LaShaw. Okay, I don't see any other supervisors in the queue to speak, so we'll turn now to, did you have anything else, Christine?
No, not at all.
Okay. Turn now to public comment.
Okay, so for our public comments, we do have Ms. Shereen Miles. And then, we have a few callers on hold.
Welcome, Shereen. Good.
I see my supervisor and then all the rest of you, too. Thank you for the opportunity. Of course, I'm here today representing Sacramento Area Congregations Together, and thanks for the acknowledgement in terms of our participation. We are monitoring this process closely. We attended the release of the LHAP and appreciate and want to be involved. We, we think that the idea of involving the community is crucial for a number of reasons, which I'm going to talk about, and the collaboration that we're beginning to see between all of these entities is really encouraging and refreshing. We contrast that with a community in which there has been far too much and continues to be far too much finger-pointing. We have a big job to do. We all have a role to play, and it's, everybody's participation is really important. If I could just point out one piece of a lack of participation, it's that we do not see law enforcement participating, and we really feel that they are a part of this picture, too. So we are pushing hard for that. I appreciated the acknowledgement that a ballot measure is something we can look at as a possibility, and we are already looking at something like that as a possibility. Our local organization, along with our state affiliate, PICO, is working on some legislation, particularly right at this moment, SB 567 from DeRosno, which is addressing the input of people into homelessness, which address, makes some changes related to no-fault evictions. So clearly, we're looking big picture at the issue of homelessness and also affordable housing, low-income housing. I just want to, I want to make one comment, and that is that we need this kind of transparency and even more transparency, because we, what we are all fighting against is nimbyism and a sense that nothing is being done, when that is not the case. There are things that are occurring, positive things that are occurring, but our public doesn't know about that, and so we see the recent kinds of attacks on, on government, on everyone, and with, with individuals who are homeless being often used as the scapegoats. So, thank you. We'll be involved in this process, and we appreciate your time.
Thank you, Shereen.
Okay, and so that is the only person we have in person, so I'll take callers now. If you could transfer the first caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Good morning. My name is Mike Jaskey. Like my colleague, Shereen Miles, also with Sacramento Area Congregations Together, Homeless and Housing Committee. First, let me say that the presentation by Ms. Weichert and the consultant provided very few details about what is going to be in this plan, and we are concerned that the actual charter of the activity, the statement of, in the, in the partnership agreement, too narrowly focuses on the Local Homeless Action Plan, which at this point is only focusing its activities on calendar 2023. So this leaves out an enormous number of crucial items of information, which we hope will be included in this draft, which we've now heard for the first time will be released in August. One of those is the identification of the scale of the problem. How many PSH units are needed to serve the needs of homeless individuals who require these intensive services? What is the cost of the services implied by the term PSH over and above the actual housing unit itself? There's no identification of the scale of the overall affordability. There's no identification of the scale of the overall affordable housing problem that could serve to prevent people from falling into homelessness. Is there any recognition of the city and the county's rena obligations as established by Secog, and at least were are conceptually acknowledged in the city and county housing elements? And frankly, we need a discussion of the vast gulf between what is currently available from funding sources and the enormous, but unspecified at this point, level of funding needed to satisfy PSH and more general affordable housing needs. In short, what SRH seems to be presenting to you and what you're discussing here among you this morning, it seems to be near-term, short-term, marginal consideration about how to improve what we've already been doing for years. What you need is a real plan that acknowledges the size of the problem and identifies strategies to achieve what we really need, a huge increase in housing development for affordable housing in general and permanent supportive housing for those who need those services. So I think you have two options. You can allow SHRA to take some more time, develop a more comprehensive plan, bring it before you as soon as possible, that addresses a number of these points I've made. Or secondly, allow them to continue in this near-term, limited-scope process that they seem to be pursuing now, but create a separate and more substantive effort on long-term, big-picture, comprehensive affordable housing development in conjunction with the city.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Next caller.
Before we get to the next caller, so either Christine or LaShelle, I mean, can you respond to maybe some of the points? I know SAC Act is a partner. I mean, it's my assumption that you are going to probably address a lot of these things that Mike is bringing up. And I think that's something we all want to see. Can I, I'll just give you a chance to respond to that, Christine.
Yeah, absolutely. We think this plan will be, we're looking at about a five-year period of time, which could be amended and extended at any point with the board and by the board and council. It will absolutely, our, the plan we release next month will have numbers in it and exactly what Mike is talking about, that what is, what is needed, how much does it cost to produce that and, and things like that. So we appreciate that and we agree that that information will be in there.
Great. Thank you.
Okay, please transfer the caller. Hi, caller, please start with your comments. You have two minutes.
Thank you. Hi, so we love you. Good morning, supervisors. My name is Mackenzie Wilson, and I'm an organizer with the Corsera Sacramento and the Sacramento Tenants Union, which also means that I'm an organizer against the criminalization policies that the county and the city perpetuate on a daily basis. As excited as I am that we're making giant steps to address this crisis, I'm concerned about the direction in which we're heading. In all of the priorities, I didn't see the creation of public housing units to be a priority for a county or a city. I see us trying to build permanent supportive housing, which is cool. I think my real problem lies in the trying to build affordable housing. I've seen what the city and the county efforts around affordable housing have looked like for the last 10 years. First of all, we need to name that there are hundreds, if not thousands, of people who live outside with a voucher. They're just, they have a voucher already. There's just no housing that will accept it. And I recognize the LEAP program to incentivize landlords, but we're not taking a look at the, the cause of this crisis, which is, in fact, the housing market. I'm going to talk more about it in a second. Second of all, in the city's efforts to produce, you know, just recently, they had 10,000 homes in the last 10 years is the goal of theirs. Less than 10 of them were for extremely low-income residents. The truth is, is that the plan, the plan around affordable housing has actively taken a role in the gentrification and displacement of individuals. This county tears down public housing and then replaces it with a voucher program that lines private landlords' pockets and drives up the median income of an area and therefore pushes out poor people while giving more money to the very market that is creating the crisis. People who live outside have been priced out of housing in our, in our area, and we do not need to have the affordable, and we don't have the affordable housing stock needed for people to not end up outside living in a tent with their car. The efforts to keep giving landlords our money is a waste of money when we could build public housing that would keep their rent money, keep their rent money and circulation of our local economy and our county investment. The only way forward is public and socially owned housing. The housing market is what is creating our crisis, and throwing more money at it and expanding it is a waste of our county tax dollars and a waste of time as we sit here really trying to address how to solve this crisis. When this plan comes back in the fall, I do hope that the leadership in charge of the L-HAP plan will have done their research on the causes of homelessness and come back with priorities that look like publicly owned housing, safe ground sites for unhoused individuals, in forms of dignified shelter.
Can you please wrap it up, Mackenzie?
Yes, of course. This is my last sentence. That don't have folks sitting outside on the concrete because we know that it takes years to build housing. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
That's the last caller.
This is any, this is a receiving file today. I believe there's no, no action from the board. Okay. Bring it back. I don't see any further comments from board members. So thank you all very much for being here. Nick and Lisa, thank you, Lisa. Sorry, I didn't give you a shout out at the beginning. Okay, so that takes us to the end of our morning agenda. We have a closed session, so we'll recess for the open session. We'll convene for a closed session, and then we'll be back at 2:00 PM, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, it's 2:02, and I will call the meeting back to order, our afternoon, for our afternoon calendar, and ask our clerk to please call the roll to establish a quorum.
Good afternoon, Supervisor Serna.
Here.
Kennedy.
Here.
Frost.
Here.
Hume.
Here.
And Desmond.
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay. So before we get to the afternoon calendar, Madam Clerk, I believe there were a couple off-agenda commenters that we didn't get to, so if they're here, let's just try to get, get to those right away.
Okay, so is Gina Friedman here? Okay, and then Evan Minton?
And I don't see Evan.
Okay, so we'll go ahead and.
Okay, so but if they do show up, per our, per my prior comments, if they do show up at the, at the end of the timed items in the afternoon, I'll, I'll take them. But the queue is otherwise closed, so.
Correct.
Okay, and then let's move on to, we're going back to item 60, I believe.
We're going back to item 60. I'm going to read the whole item back into the record. This is the Antelope Property and Business Improvement District Public Hearing to Renew the District and Levy Assessments. You took this up this morning and continued the balance for the tabulation of the assessment balance and to take final actions to renew the district and levy the assessments for fiscal year 2023-24. And then you're also going to introduce an ordinance to renew the district and levy the assessments, waive full reading, and continue to August 22nd for adoption.
Okay, so hello, Vanessa. So let's just wait a moment. We have some folks filing into the chambers here. We have one item or a couple items before we get to our annual report on the Black Shadow Legacy Campaign. So we'll take, go ahead, Vanessa.
Okay, thank you. Good afternoon, Chair Desmond, members of the board. Vanessa Lieberman, again, your manager of special districts with the Department of Community Development. The ballots have been tabulated. Seventeen ballots in total were returned from approximately 60% of the property owners. Eighty-two percent were in favor of the P-Bid renewal, and 17% were not in favor. At this time, I'd like to turn the microphone over to our executive director, Mr. Chris Evans of the Antelope P-Bid.
Okay, welcome, Chris. And I see you got a couple members of your security team for Antelope out there.
I do. It wasn't very well planned with me sitting on the inside there, was it? Good afternoon, board members. I want to say, first of all, thank you to you. We appreciate your service and your time and the leadership you've provided to the ABC District over the last few years. I'm happy today to be here and say that we just went through the renewal, as you heard, we're now at 82% yeses after five years. And so today, the reason I wanted to present in the afternoon was, number one, to tell you, you have an amazing staff. Your staff has helped us through this renewal process every step of the way. Michael Middleton and Vanessa and the staff has been great, and it didn't seem to matter what issues came up, we were able to resolve them quickly and move forward. And that's exactly what we needed as property owners in the district. Dean, why don't you come on down with your daughter and Emily? Could you come on down? There's several people who've made this possible. We've worked on renewal now. A year ago, when we went to our property owners and we said, we're thinking about going out for renewal early, they basically said, no, the economy isn't good, things aren't right, times aren't right. And we started a campaign, and we started a campaign with all of our property owners to make sure they understood the value of having the P-Bid and what the P-Bid represented. One of the things we did is we rebranded the car. We no longer, while we do use Night Watch Security, we now have the Antelope ABC District Security Car through the district. We're constantly branding so that our membership knew that we were there. That allowed us, by the way, over the last four years, to handle over 14,000 calls for service. And that's 14,000 calls over four years that Sacramento sheriffs would normally have received. So first of all, we want to say thank you to you and your staff. We also want to say thank you to Night Watch Security and Dean. Did you want to say anything? This is Dean. He actually runs our security team and has done a great job.
I'd like to thank the board of supervisors, especially their staff, for helping us out so much. The relationships we built over the five years is what made us here where we are today, is that relationship that we're at 82%. The community has come together and basically is loving us, is because we're doing so much for our community and its outreach with the board of supervisors here. A lot of your staff comes out and they help out, and they're in the community, too. And I just want to thank you guys for that.
Thanks, Dean. Dean, it's good to hear, good to see you here, and I never thought you'd be talking up here at our podium, so that's great.
We had to drag him, I'll be honest. But he's running to his daughter.
Night Watch has a great social media presence in the Antelope Sacramento region. It's because of Caitlin Bressard, not because of me. She does all our social media, and she's been awesome throughout the past five years dealing with the, our social media outreach.
Did you want to say anything, or did you just want to smile? We also use Bliss Brothers Maintenance, they're very important to us. And obviously, we have to say thank you to Civitas. You all know Civitas, and this is Emily. You all know Emily. Civitas has helped us through a couple different P-Bid renewals. They're an amazing organization, and I just publicly want to say thank you to you and for all your hard work that made this possible. I'm proud of the property owners. As you heard, we're now doing a 10-year renewal, so you won't have to see me up here doing this again in a suit for 10 years. And that's really it. For the most part, I just want you to know that we owe, a couple more thank yous, I'm sorry. Jeremy Krug. Jeremy Krug wasn't able to be here today. For those of you who know him, he's our chairman of the board. He's about to step down, and Steve Anstutz will be taking over. But Jeremy Krug is the reason that the ABC District is here. It went through four different versions before he was able to get property owners to get enough yeses to go to petition. So he worked on the ABC District himself for three years before he actually engaged Civitas and started growing it. So we owe a big thank you to Jeremy Krug as he, as he moves on from being on our board. And then Steve Anstutz, who is also, he's with Les Schwab Tires. He's been an original board member, and he's stepping up to take the position of president, so we appreciate that. And in closing, let me just say that it's a, it is a community effort with the Antelope Business Community District. We're very small, but we're very intent. We work on security and maintenance, and we have some great partners, and we include all of you in that, and we appreciate your support.
Thank you very much, Chris. Thank you for all your hard work. Okay, Supervisor Frost.
Oh, I just wanted to congratulate you, Chris, and ABC and Civitas for this smooth renewal. They don't always go so smoothly, so that's a reflection on you. I don't think we'd be here without Civitas, because I remember when we were trying to establish the, the P-Bid, it was a little bit challenging at first, but since that time, you've really, oh, you've, you've really cleaned up that district, and you've done so many things to make the commercial district better and safer and more inviting for people. It's your leadership and your commitment, night and day. I know about you. And Dean and daughter. They're everywhere, you know? You guys are great, so I just wanted to congratulate you and thank you for all your hard work and all that you do in the district.
Well, thank you. It's a team effort, and we've got a great team, so thank you very much.
Okay. No other supervisors with comments. Vanessa, did you have any, any other comments before I go to public comment? If we have any? Do we have any public comment on this item?
Do not have any comments at this time.
Okay.
Perfect. Well, with that, staff recommends that the board adopt the two attached resolutions and waive the full reading of the ordinance and continue it to August 22nd. I do think I have some technical fill-in-the-blanks to read for the resolution and the ordinance sections.
Go ahead.
Okay. Section 2, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received zero written protests. Section 3, at the close of the tabulation, the board had received 17 assessment ballots totaling 60.16% of the total assessment to be levied, of which 82.13% was in favor of the assessment and 17.87% was in opposition. And that concludes my piece. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you, Vanessa, and I'll bring it back to the board.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay. First and second, please vote. Okay, congratulations, the Antelope P-Bid, and thank you, staff, for all your work.
Yeah, we'll move on to item 63.
Okay. Item 63 are your Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property for the South Wad Avenue Improvement Project. For this item, the board will be asked to take five separate motions. Your first property is the 8900 Elder Creek Trust located at 8900 Elder Creek Road. And then your second property is S. Southwest 57 LLC, a California Limited Liability Company at 6803 South Wad Avenue. Next is the Realty Associates Fund Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership located at 3 Wayne Court. And then also another one located at 1 Wayne Court for property number four. And then five is Hussain J. Nabahani, a married man and his soul in separate property, and Walid Nabahani and Maha Eldbe, trustees or successors in trust under the terms of the Walid Nabahani and Maha Eldbe Trust dated June 25, 2021, as joint tenants located at 8960 Alder Avenue. The environmental document is a final supplemental environmental impact review.
Okay, thank you. Peter and I, I think you're going to be, let us know that on two of these anyway, we won't have to take action today.
Correct. Correct, yes. So good afternoon, Chair Desmond and all members of the board. I'm Peter Hannan, Program Manager, Acquisition Section with the Real Estate Division, and I'm here today to introduce this item, which recommends board approval for five Resolutions of Necessity Authorizing Eminent Domain Actions to Acquire Real Property Interest for the Department of Transportation's South Wad Avenue Improvement Project. As Chair Desmond has said before I begin my presentation, there has been some recent developments regarding Resolutions Number Three and Number Four for the Realty Associates Fund 12 Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership located at 1 and 3 Wayne Court. The owner has provided the necessary signed acquisition documents, and the Real Estate Division and the Director of General Services has fully executed those necessary documents. Therefore, I ask the board to drop Resolutions Number Three and Number Four, again, for the Realty Associates Fund 12 Portfolio LP, a Delaware Limited Partnership at both 1 and 3 Wayne Court. Thank you. The purpose of the project is to modify South Wad Avenue from State Highway 16, also known as Jackson Road, at the north to Florin Road at the south. This is a distance of approximately three miles. The project will widen South Wad Avenue from two to four lanes and construct complete street improvements, including landscape medians and turn lanes, buffered bike lanes, sidewalks, curb ramps, traffic signal modifications, and pavement repair and resurfacing. The project will provide improved bicycle, pedestrian, and transit facilities, as well as congestion relief, enhanced safety, and aesthetic improvements along the corridor. Of the 74 necessary acquisitions required for this project, five properties are the subject of this board item. At this moment, I'd like to display Attachment 3 to the board's materials here, which is the list of properties.
Flo, can we display the, Peter's?
So each of the individual properties necessary for the project and the easement areas are showing on the list here. So number one, 8900 Elder Creek Trust located at 8900 Elder Creek Road. So number one, 8900 Elder Creek Trust located at 8900 Elder Creek Road, Assessor's parcel number 0640031006. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the affected property. Number two, SW 57 LLC, a California Limited Liability Company located at 6803 South Wad Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement needed for the project across a portion of the property. Okay, now, number three, Realty Associates Fund, and number four, Realty Associates Fund, again, both at 1 and 3 Wayne Court. I'd ask the Board to please drop those resolutions. Number five, Hussein J. Nabahani and others located at 8960 Alder Avenue. The real property interest the county seeks to acquire consists of an easement for public utilities and public facilities and a temporary construction easement across a portion of the affected property. The county obtained appraisals for the affected properties from an independent appraiser and presented offers to the respective property owners for the purchase of the various easements that I just mentioned and that are displayed on Attachment Three. The county's negotiations with these remaining owners have reached impasse. The county is thus unable to secure the necessary property rights, property easement, and interest on the subject properties under the current circumstances. Today's Resolutions of Necessity and anticipated eminent domain actions will provide for possession of the required real property interests and construction of the project while the county proceeds to acquire the easements through eminent domain if necessary. Information to support the required statutory Resolution of Necessity findings is contained within the staff report included with the agenda packet, along with owner contact histories. Notices of intention to seek approval of the Resolution of Necessity were mailed to the respective property owners by registered mail and standard U.S. mail at least 15 days in advance of today's hearing. If you have any questions regarding the project or any of the properties in question, I or other project team members currently present are available to address those questions for you. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Peter. I don't see any Supervisors queued up here, so I will go to public comment. Any public comment on?
Do not have any public comments for this item.
Okay. So I'll pull it back and I know we need to vote on each one of these, at least the three we're going to be voting on. The other two, I don't think, we don't have to take affirmative action to drop them. We just don't take any action on those other two. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay.
Flo told me you normally do take action to drop those.
Okay. So the first thing we'll do is, the Chair will move to drop items three and four, both following Realty.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Then we'll move on to the first item. We'll have to take separate action on each one by four-fist vote, correct? Okay. So for the first one, 8900 Elder Creek Trust, I'd entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second. Please vote.
Unanimous vote.
Okay, for the second one, Southwest 57 LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
And the last one, Hussein Nabahani.
So moved.
Second.
Unanimous vote.
Okay. Okay, Peter. Thank you very much, Members of the Board. Have a great afternoon.
Thank you.
Okay, our final timed item for the day. Madam Clerk?
Item 64 is your Fiscal Year 2021 through 22 Annual Report on the Black Child Legacy Campaign.
Michelle, you kicking this one off?
Yes. I love kicking.
And thank you, yes, and thank you for everybody who is here in chambers for this item as well.
Good afternoon, Board Members. Michelle Callejas, Director of Child, Family, and Adult Services. And I just want to call out all the green and great energy in the room today, so thank you all for being here. So I do want to start by saying thank you to this Board for their continued support of this. This is our seventh year providing updates on the project. And, and of course, thank you Supervisor Serna for championing this so many years ago. So probation, Department of Human Assistance, First Five Sacramento, and Child, Family, and Adult Services have been active participants in the Black Child Legacy Campaign since the Blue Ribbon Commission was formed. And the excitement and commitment to the work continues throughout our departments and beyond the staff at the front line. I also want to call out our Health Services Department. They, they make significant investments as well in providing culturally responsive services and addressing racial disparities, particularly through their Black Infant Health Program, their African-American Perinatal Health Program, and their Perinatal Equity Initiative. And while we're pleased about the, some of the performance data that you'll see today, we are really proud of the relationships we have built across public and private organizations and with the families that we collectively serve together. It takes a whole village to raise a child and here in Sacramento, we continue to strengthen that village for our kids and their families. So I'm going to cover just a few slides about the county department's involvement and then I'll pass it on to our First Five Executive Director Julie Golelo, who will talk about First Five Investments and go into the data.
So I'm going to ask Metro Cable if they'll bring up the county PowerPoint, please?
Sorry, Michelle. I can see what's up there.
I just launched and didn't even look. I was a little excited to get going, so.
There we go.
So many of you have seen this slide before and it, it represents the shift that nationally and here locally we are trying to make, and that's shifting from a child welfare system to a child and family well-being system. And the, the, the commission that was put into place by President Obama on eliminating child abuse and neglect fatalities called out for a public health approach in order to make the systems change. So the public health approach includes child protection, but it engages a much broader spectrum of community agencies and system partners to identify, test, and evaluate strategies to prevent harm to children. Public health approaches promote equitable solutions and bring public and private partners together to coordinate resources that support families, and that is what the Black Child Legacy Campaign does. And the Black Child Legacy Campaign is an integral part of our public health approach to child, family, and community well-being. It is a true demonstration of shared family and community responsibility to protect children using a three-pronged approach. First is multidisciplinary support for families co-located at trusted, community-based sites, the community incubator leads. Shared power across public and private partnerships where partners hold each other accountable. And data. As we collect more and more data, we thoughtfully and strategically make better decisions grounded in the research and lessons learned. As a result, we're not only seeing improvements through our population-level data that Julie will discuss, but we're also seeing our community working more closely toward a common goal of keeping children and families safe, healthy, and well. So later you'll hear just some quotes from those that we work with, including our staff and system partners. So since 2015, Human Assistance, Probation, and Child, Family, and Adult Services have co-located staff at each of the seven community incubator lead agencies. And that sounds easy, right? We've got staff co-located, but it's really all the work they do through that co-location. We've participated in a number of community sessions recently, and one of the number-one issues that continues to come up is creating better access to services, to go out in communities where, where our community members live and provide multiple, access to multiple systems. And that is what's happening at our community incubator lead sites. Someone can come in and they can access housing, they can access CalFresh, we can assist them with whatever's going on in their child welfare involvement, and we have our deputy probation officers also on site, all connecting to resources, doing their best to collectively support the families. Through multidisciplinary teaming, county and community partners work closely with families to identify the needs that need to be addressed and goals to work toward those together. The integrated holistic approach to serving families in the neighborhoods where they live removes barriers for families and reduces the amount of time our community members have to navigate through multiple public systems. Our systems are complex, and then when all of us are serving one family, it's even more complex. It also reduces the number of times a family has to tell their story, which we know can be traumatic in and of itself. I'll say a little bit more about the cultural brokers in the next two slides, but I'll, I'll say that the, for the cross-systems work, it has, it has really helped us expand our work in the area of prevention and early intervention, and it has, it has really laid a strong foundation to address racial disparities through other cross-systems approaches. So I want to just take a moment and recognize county staff and our community incubator lead site staff. Can you all rise because this is, you guys are doing the work? Look at this. Thank you for all the work that you are doing. So the strong foundation that, that this campaign has established, we've built off of it with our Child Safety Forward, which is our local prevention cabinet, which you've heard about. And Julie Golelo is going to speak to some more cross-system strategies, but I just want to highlight a couple. And, and that is with the prevention cabinet, it started small. There were like maybe 12 of us, and it included county system, Sierra Health Foundation, and a couple of providers. And it's broadened now to include many, many different systems, many partners that serve children and families in our community. And most importantly, we've added community members to the cabinet and they have been invaluable in guiding our work. We often make the mistake of providing services without asking our community what they actually need, so this has been a really strong way to reinforce, force the importance and inclusion of community voice. The Black Child Legacy has also created momentum to launch other programs focused on reducing disparities. We've done two Safe Sleep Baby expansions, one where we've made a systems change at the child abuse and neglect hotline, and then also where we'll be expanding into the hospital systems. And then in our partnership with First Five, the community incubator leads, and our family resource centers, we are using ARPA funding for the Building Strong Families Program. Again, Julie will speak to that. And then we use this foundation to build our local community comprehensive prevention plan, and that is money that we are going to access with the state. Child Welfare and Probation had to submit a joint plan, and we have tailored ours to focus specifically on reducing racial disparities. As you know, African-Americans are disproportionately represented in our child welfare system and experience disparities and outcomes. So there are a number of strategies included in the plan with the overall goal of reducing the number of African-American families that come to the attention of child welfare. We have made some strides in this area, and as I've talked about here, in the last eight years, we've reduced the number of children in foster care by 48%, but it's not working for all children. Black children represent 11.2% of our local child population, but 34% of children in foster care. Again, it's gotten slightly better, but we still have a lot of work to do, and we're hoping to reduce the disparity gap with our comprehensive prevention plan. Okay, so super cool program, the Cultural Broker Program. Our Cultural Broker Plan, Program is implemented through the county and three community-based partners. They have specific knowledge of the values, beliefs, and practices of the communities they serve, but they also go through an extensive training on our child welfare system. I think it's like 40, 45 hours, so it's like a child welfare boot camp, so that they can really understand how our system works and then help the families navigate through it. They serve as liaisons to engage families with CPS and help families navigate our system, including the juvenile dependency court process, which can also be confusing. We started the Cultural Broker Program to strengthen engagement with African-American families, help build trust in our department, and to reduce entries, re-entries, and promote safe and timely reunification. As I mentioned earlier, we have significant disparities regarding African-American families, so it is understandable that we have not garnered much trust. This slide depicts some of the program's success. So the Cultural Broker Program began in 2018 as an initial pilot and then was fully implemented in 2019. Since that time, 552 families have been referred and 397 have been assigned a cultural broker. Of those, 174 reunified with their family. 101 avoided court intervention altogether, meaning we were able to keep the children safely with their families and not go into foster care. And then 112 achieved guardianship or were adopted. So when we look at the permanency goals of reunification, adoption, and guardianship, that's 100, 286 families that achieved permanency out of the 397. Also, we, we always look at outcomes one year later to, to look at whether the children re-entered. So those children that had been in foster care, there's a year within which the federal, the feds look at us to say, did they re-enter? And of the 397 families, only 3% re-entered. There were eight out of that total. Our overall re-entry rate is 12.2%, so it's pretty phenomenal, the successes of our cultural brokers. So here are just some quotes from cultural broker families and our staff. My cultural broker's role in the closing of my referral was that she helped me understand what the social worker was saying to me about my case. Sometimes we talk in child welfare ease. It's the, all the legalities, and so our cultural brokers are able to break it down and help us say it a little more, in a more understandable way, and really help the family understand what it is that we're trying to accomplish. There are a lot of staff that have called out. One of our cultural brokers, Margot Santana, came to a meeting with the family prepared with resources that even our social worker didn't know about. So again, working cross-systems, working with partners, we have access to far more information and supports. The Cultural Broker Program linked me to a men's group from Better Life Children's Services that gives me someone to talk to about any issues and keeps me balanced. And then the very last one, I thought CPS was wrong for coming into our lives, but I now have a better understanding of the safety and risk factors that had to be addressed. So also of note is that the cultural brokers have not just gained, gained the trust and respect of our staff, but also of the juvenile dependency court. The Executive Director of Children's Law Center, who represents foster children in court, noted that she was impressed at how one cultural broker supported both the family and the department, seeking what both parties were needing. Another Children's Law Center attorney noted that if it wasn't for the cultural broker working with the father and the department to navigate an impasse, she was not sure the family would have reunified in as timely a manner. And perhaps our former presiding judge of the juvenile court summed it up best when he said, "The secret sauce to success was that cultural brokers speak all languages, the language of the family, the social worker, and the court." So I also want to speak just real quickly about how we have expanded the Cultural Broker Program based on some early successes. We've launched a Safe Sleep Baby 2.0 campaign that, that Julie Golelo will speak to, and we've engaged all our cultural brokers in providing Safe Sleep Baby education. We were able to, we applied for and received a grant. We were able to, we applied for and received a grant from the Office of Juvenile Justice Diversion and Prevention, focused on our Early Intervention Family Treatment Court, to specifically engage and support African-American families being offered the services and completing the services. And we have added a few cultural brokers to help with recruitment and retention of African-American resource parents. And lastly, I just want to call out the national recognition and local that the cultural brokers have been seeing. So they presented at our Child Welfare Directors Association Conference in San Diego last year. They were able to go out to the Child Welfare League of America's National Conference in DC and presented there. They've presented to the state Child Welfare Council, the Michigan Supreme Court, Casey Family Programs, a couple of different states, and then here in California, they've provided presentations and guidance to San Bernardino, Santa Clara, San Joaquin, and the California Department of Social Services, all trying to figure out how they've been able to really implement and sustain such a strong program. So kudos to the cultural brokers. Are there any in the room? Yes. Okay, now to the first data slide, and Julie Galelo will speak to the data for the rest of the indicators. I was asked to address the third-party homicides as well as a probation slide, but Chief Yarber is right here. He sent me notes on what to say, so I'm going to do my best. And next year, he gets to do this. So first, a few things just to note about this slide, and I know you have seen them, some of you have seen these in the past, but the blue line represents statistics for African-Americans. Orange line is non-African-American. The red line is the countywide average. And then at the bottom of each slide, you'll see three-year rolling averages. So all the partners involved in this, including child death review team, agreed to use three-year rolling averages for the data, as it evens out the increases, the dips, or anomalies that may occur in any specific year.
Michelle?
Yes.
Excuse me, Supervisor Serna has a comment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Don't want to interrupt your flow too much, but with regards to the introduction of the data slides, I think it's important to note for the public who may be watching or not as familiar with this multi-year effort to address both the disparity rate and also the real numbers, that there was a very intentional and deliberate attempt to kind of bite off what we could chew, right? We had from the death reports, data on all kinds of different types of death, right? And death rates for different minority groups here in Sacramento County, but it's the four leading causes of death that are most pronounced in the African-American childhood population that was the focus of the Blue Ribbon Commission, the Steering Committee, and certainly Black Child Legacy Campaign. So I think it's important to kind of offer that premise for those that may be wondering that, why aren't you looking at car accidents? Why aren't you looking at drownings or what have you? So just want to make sure that that's clear for those that, again, may not be as familiar with the effort.
Thank you, Supervisor Serna. So to his point, what the 20-year child death review team report noted was that black children die at two to three times the rate as compared to non-African-American children, and that the top four causes were perinatal conditions, sleep-related child deaths, child abuse and neglect deaths, and third-party homicides. And so thank you for that. That's what we'll be covering today. This is the fourth leading cause of death for African-American children, and we look at birth to 18 for this, well, for all the measures. So the data for 2012 to 2014, that's when efforts were being discussed, but they really began launching in 2015. So the rolling year 2012 to 2014 is our baseline. So one thing to note for this particular category of death is that the N, or the total number of deaths, is much lower than the other categories. So for this particular reporting period, 2018 to 2020, there were 11 child deaths due to third-party homicide, and four of them, or 36%, involved African-American children. So there's slightly better news this year than last year's report. Last year, there was a 15% increase in third-party homicides and a 54% increase in disparity gap. This year, we see a 22% reduction in overall African-American third-party homicides, and we see a 2% reduction in the disparity gap, which is not a lot, but it's certainly, hopefully this will be trending in the right direction for the next few years, because despite the slight reduction, there is still a higher number of African-American children dying, and it's quite alarming. And so more work definitely needs to be done with this cause of death. So this next slide shows how this partnership and the great work of Chief Yarber's officers out in the community, how it has shown the overall decline of juveniles brought into the justice system in the community incubator lead neighborhoods. Probation attributes a decline to the work they're doing within the community incubator lead sites and the neighborhoods. They are taking a prevention and early intervention approach to try to promote family well-being. One of the things they speak about is the access to services being a major contributing factor. As I mentioned earlier, the community wants us in community so they can access the services we provide. Probation officers provide referrals to programs to increase family functioning within the home while also addressing behavioral issues with the youth, including gang participation, delinquency, antisocial behavior, substance abuse, and mental health, often induced by earlier childhood traumas. They educate, working with First Five, they educate families about parenting, perinatal conditions, and how to safely sleep their babies, and they connect them to crisis intervention services. During this reporting period, deputy probation officers provided case management for over 550 youth in the community incubator lead neighborhoods, and they made over 400 referrals to community-based services. Through these educational opportunities and CIL collaborative teamings, youth and their families are provided with knowledge on making positive lifestyle choices, with a strong support system working together to ensure the youth's success and to limit the youth's exposure to the juvenile justice system. Similar to child welfare, African-American youth are overrepresented in the juvenile justice system, and in fact, many of the youth involved now or who have been involved in juvenile justice were also involved with the child welfare system. Given this, probation is also targeting, is focusing on reducing the number of African-American youth that come into the juvenile justice through their portion of the comprehensive prevention plan. They will use universal but targeted approaches focused on the three ZIP codes with the highest representation of African-American youth. One of the things they've done, which I can't wait to hear more about, Chief Yarber, is they've onboarded a Black Child Legacy Campaign Youth Advocate to help with these efforts. So I'm really excited to see where that can go. So any questions on either of these two slides that Chief Yarber can answer for you?
I do have a question, Michelle. Have we ever, thank you, Chair, have we ever parsed out, say, like infant-to-toddler age and then ambulatory to teenager age, just to sort of see how many deaths are happening wholly, more or less, within the home versus once the children have some autonomy?
So I'm going to punt that to Julie Galelo. I know that we have broken down data for our littles, so birth to five. But I don't know if they've, if our evaluators have parsed that out. I think it would be pretty interesting to see where, what I do know about child abuse and neglect deaths is that it is like 88% children zero to five. So our littles are most vulnerable in that area. So now I will kick this to Julie Galelo.
Good afternoon, Julie.
Hello. Good afternoon, Supervisors. It's a pleasure to see you. I am Julie Galelo, and I am your executive director at First Five. And I'm wearing my BCLC green. I always represent with my, when I get the opportunity to talk about the amazing work of this program, of this collective impact model. So let me, oops, sorry, wrong direction, wrong direction. There you go. So what I'm going to share with you this afternoon is the First Five Sacramento's complimentary services and programs and funding that join in with your county investment to create this whole umbrella. We do this work in partnership with the Sacramento County Department and with Sierra Health Foundation and all of the community partners in the room today. You just heard about those leading four causes of preventable deaths, and three of the four of them really take place in those, primarily take place in the first five years of life, which is why First Five is so much a partner in this work. And that, Michelle alluded to it, but that first 12 months of life is the most dangerous 12 months that a child will ever face due to a myriad of things, but infant death is really, around child abuse prevention and many other things, is the most dangerous time. So we support services and programs that I'll talk about. We also support staffing for the Steering Committee on the Reduction of African-American Child Deaths, because we really see that backbone, having a backbone organization to lead this work that is tied to the community is super important, that trust that is there and has brought the county and community programs even closer together. We've been a partner since 2011, when Chair Serna, Commissioner Serna, first pulled together that Blue Ribbon Commission. And First Five has invested over $20 million in the last decade toward this effort. We fund not only the Steering Committee, but educational campaigns, we fund direct services and systems work, all to address those perinatal conditions, sleep-related deaths, and child abuse and neglect homicides. To specifically address perinatal conditions, this is just a small little web ad for our Unequal Birth Campaign, which has been a really successful partnership with the Sacramento County Department of Health Services, and it really speaks to racism being the root cause of the disparities in birth outcomes for moms and for our black moms and babies. And our largest investment in the effort to reduce perinatal condition deaths is our partnership with Her Health First to implement the Black Mothers United Program, or BMU, as we call it. This program connects pregnant women to one-on-one coaches or advocates, those are peers in the community. Many of them have actually been BMU clients, who then become employees at Her Health First and continue the tradition of shepherding in these new moms. Last fiscal year, 162 moms received services through Black Mothers United, and 66% of them, so the majority, lived in one of the seven BCLC-focused neighborhoods. So you can see on the slide the excellent outcomes of our 71 babies who were born to moms, BMU moms during that period. And furthermore, moms who met more frequently with their pregnancy coaches, they had better outcomes, both for themselves and the babies. Self-reported depression dropped from 20% at intake to 5% by the time of the follow-up appointments. Self-reported domestic violence dropped from 8% to 3%, and the inability to fulfill food needs dropped from 7% to zero. Analysis shows that a higher number of check-ins with those pregnancy coaches and the regular prenatal care predicted better birth outcomes for the babies. Our evaluator, and this is really exciting, our evaluator each year looks at the cohort of children born two years prior, because we don't have data until 2020, because death data does lag several years behind. So they looked at 137 BMU babies born in 2019, and none of those babies had a, died in the first year of life, which is pretty impressive, much higher, much better than the rates of the county overall. Next, just a couple words about our Safe Sleep Baby Program. We have funded the Child Abuse Prevention Center for the past decade or more to lead our work in this effort. They focus on families, black families, primarily with children under the age of six months, because that's the most critical period, but all the way up to a year. And there is a really intentional and specific outreach, although they serve everyone, this is truly a targeted universalism in its approach. They serve everybody through this program, and then they really target messaging to the African-American community. The program is one-hour safe sleep education, followed by a distribution of a crib if needed. And then in addition to that direct service part of it, Safe Sleep Baby also works with all four of our health systems and all eight birthing hospitals to provide a consistent message around how to sleep your baby. They now ask at every, every time a parent leaves with a new baby, they check the car seat, and they also ask, "How do you plan to sleep your baby?" And if they don't have a safe place, that's when they know to distribute the crib.
Julie, excuse me, Supervisor Serna?
Thank you, Chair. Just real quick, Julie, you say we work with all four of the health systems. Do we work with the FQHCs as well?
We do work with the FQHCs, yes. Our public health department has excellent relationship with those comprehensive perinatal services providers, so yes, in there all the time. Yep. Great. You'll see family resource centers on this slide also. This is our primary effort to reduce those child abuse and neglect homicides in partnership with Family, Child, and Adult Services. First Five also funds the nine family resource centers. They serve children zero to 18 with all kinds of wonderful programming and home visiting. And while all nine family resource centers serve African-American families, two of them in particular, the Mutual Assistance Network site in Ardent Arcade and SAC Children's Home site in Valley High, have been really bolstered by the First Five funding to specifically do programming for African-American families. Michelle touched on cross-systems work. I won't belabor it. We've got a lot of cross-system stuff going on. It's really been how we've evolved this program over time. Very excited to see the impact that the systems work is having. I won't spend too much time on that. Okay, and then we're going to get into our first countywide slide that is the other three causes of death, so not third-party homicide. This one is important to note on this slide. This is all infant deaths, so we are focusing on preventable deaths, but this is, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, this slide would include nonpreventable deaths as well, like a child cancer or illness, or drowning, or car crash, something like that. And the infant death rate, as you can see, dipped to a low of 8.3 for the 2015, 2017, but it has been steadily increasing since that time. It's clearly a concerning trend, especially because in 2020, we're really only getting into the start of the COVID. into the start of the COVID years. And it's concerning to me because of that. While there was a 6% reduction overall in African American infant deaths and a 19% decrease in the disparity since the baseline period, there's clearly still more work to be done here. And African American infants are still dying at twice the rate of all other infants. And now we'll look at those specific causes. So what is, what's, what's, what data is filling in those, the data for the infant deaths? The first one we'll talk about is perinatal causes, which include things like prematurity, low birth weight, placenta abruptia, abruption, and congenital defects. Unfortunately, you'll see that the rate has increased over the last three-year rolling period. And this is one area where we have more work to do. It's complex. I don't think you can provide services to work your way out of this one entirely. I think a lot of systems change has to happen here and I think this is really tied to institutional racism. And it's going to be, this is the hardest nut to crack is what we've, we've come to discover here through all this work. On a brighter note, infant sleep-related deaths have had a significant decline with 54% reduction since 2012-14 baseline and a 60% reduction in the disparity gap between African American infants and infants of all other ethnicities. We definitely believe that this is in part due to the work of Safe Sleep Baby, the many partners in the community promoting that consistent message and the systems changes at our birthing hospitals. For child abuse and neglect-related deaths, when compared to baseline, there's been an 88% reduction overall for child, African American child deaths ages zero to 17 and a 96% reduction in disparity. That's an incredible downward trend and it's truly a testament to the focused intentional work from the CILs, the FRCs, the cultural brokers, and this room basically doing all this work. It contributed toward this amazing outcome. Okay. So to wrap up the presentation, now that we have our 2020 data, you may be wondering, did we meet our goals? The Blue Ribbon Commission set that overall goal of a 10% to 20% decrease in African American child death, but they also had specific goals. And through this slide, you can see that we did, we exceeded the goal of 10% to 20% by getting a 30% reduction in child death. For perinatal conditions, again, we had the slight increase. We did not meet our goal of 23%. Unfortunately, there's even been an increase in our disparity gap. For infant sleep-related deaths, we exceeded the reduction goal of 33% and we are at 54%. And clearly for child abuse and neglect homicides, we exceeded that hugely. All of that done in collaboration with everyone in this room, it's amazing. It, it, it's gone beyond just a verbal commitment to collaborate in quotes. It really has been a decade-long journey and so many relationships have been built and I think it's just all about those relationships. Okay, I will stop and I can answer questions now or I can turn it over to Shelley Dyer from Sierra Health Foundation and whichever is your preference.
Thank you, Julie. We're not going to let you get away with that easy. Supervisor Serna.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Thank you, Julie and, and Michelle for the presentation. The one, the one thing I would change relative to the table, the last slide, which references our goals, is I would, next time you present this way, note that in many instances, the goal was exceeded, not just met, right?
Yep.
That's why we find ourselves applauding after seeing this data. But I just want to say that on behalf of my fellow commissioners at First Five, I'm really proud of the work, not just here by this board over the years, but certainly the, the commitment from First Five commissioners and certainly your executive leadership at First Five for the partnership and the willingness, in fact, to make big financial investments in this tremendously important work earlier than the county did for different reasons. But you know, 2015 will always be a year that I will very much remember because it was the, the year that I first chaired the Board of Supervisors and it was the year that we finally had some of the early structure that was the intended kind of intermittent product of all the work of the Blue Ribbon Commission, the Steering Committee, all the, the work that Sierra Health Foundation had committed to in working with the county. When we took that structure for what we knew we wanted to implement to affect the change that we wanted, setting for ourselves goals, and then we finally put the resources towards it. So now, you know, we're very fortunate to hear the good news about certain milestones being met, but I think we would fail, quite frankly, if we left today, as great as today is, knowing about the successes we've all enjoyed without also acknowledging the fact that there is a lot of work left ahead. And I'm hopeful that there'll be a sea of green shirts out here come June when the Board will deliberate its recommended budget for the next fiscal year. You'll recall that we did something somewhat unusual three years ago, almost three years ago, during our budget deliberations there then, here at the county. And that was to look at the investments that we wanted to make in Black Child Legacy Campaign and continuing work with RACD effort and make a three-year financial commitment. Typically, when we deliberate the budget, we're simply looking at the next fiscal year, so just a single year. But what we did, we, the Board, did that was unusual with the partnership and, and work of Executive Edwards is, is make that three-year commitment. Well, we're going to come up on that third year here shortly. So I'm hopeful that, again, working with Sierra Health Foundation and all the, all the great boots on the ground that are represented in this chamber here today will again converge on, on these chambers to let this board and the public know that the investments are absolutely essential. This is one of those areas of determined effort to, to arguably address the most important thing in our community, which is the, the welfare of our children, the lives of our children. And we're making progress. And oftentimes, you know, we, we don't hear that encouraging news about what we're attempting to do for something as complex as this. And so again, I want to congratulate everyone. I know we have yet to hear from Sierra Health Foundation. I'm eager to hear that part of the presentation. But I really want to commend the boots on the ground here, the, the folks that are functioning as cultural brokers and, and just, you, you really have stepped up in a way that I couldn't have even imagined 11 years ago. And you've fulfilled the, the desire, at least by this member of the Board, for the community to own this effort. This is not just about government. This isn't just about nonprofits doing good work, but it's the community itself doing the, the work and being accountable and, you know, and relishing the successes, but making sure that we continue to do all that is necessary to, to save our children. So again, thank you.
That's it?
Okay, then I would.
Thank you, Julie. And no one can top that.
No, can't top that. I would love to, poor Shelley has to top that. I would like to introduce Shelley Dyer from Sierra Health Foundation.
Welcome, Shelley.
Thank you, Supervisor Desmond. Good afternoon to you all, the Board of Supervisors. We are so grateful and I just have to start off with thanking you all for your continued support of the Black Child Legacy Campaign for many years and for entrusting the center at Sierra Health Foundation to work with community leaders throughout Sacramento County to lead up this work. I know you've stood up once before, but we have other people who've trickled in. I'd just like to have all of the community leaders with Black Child Legacy Campaign, including some youth who I see here, to stand and just, we'd like to thank you for all of your work. We've stood enough. They've stood enough. We'll get started. This overview, we'd just like to share about the successes of the Black Child Legacy Campaign, also just our work toward solving and resolving the Black Maternal Health Crisis, our Healing the Hood Violence Prevention work, as well as to elaborate on the systems change work that is really central to the Black Child Legacy Campaign. There we go. As you all know, the Steering Committee on the Reduction of African American Child Deaths was launched. The center at Sierra Health Foundation was selected to be able to support this work and to identify the communities where there are the highest rates of African American child death. And those are the seven communities and community leaders who are represented here today, where the work is focused of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. Although it's been 11 years since that launch, there's a continued commitment to the, the health and the well-being of African American communities and children here within Sacramento County. This is our infrastructure and we still have our seven community incubator leads in each neighborhood represented here. We know that currently there's seven, but very soon there will be an eighth site launched within Sacramento County. We are currently working to identify that site based on the data and we will select that site, really our Steering Committee will select that site based on where there are the highest rates of African American child deaths, where there is still a need for an additional Black Child Legacy Campaign site. We've shared a bit about the systems change successes and the teams who truly make this work happen. And I'll just share again that we have our community incubator lead sites, also the Office of Probation and other departments here within the county who make this work happen daily. This is a huge success for the Black Child Legacy Campaign as Michelle and Julie shared earlier, this means that we have community county workers who are on-site at each of the seven community incubator lead sites and families are able to come directly to their neighborhood, community area and receive the services that they need. They don't have to worry about the transportation. Often, many people in these communities do not have cars and so there's public transportation involved and many other barriers to service access. And so this really removes a barrier, having county workers outstationed at each of the community incubator lead sites. Our goals here, Julie shared a bit about this data earlier. I think it's really important to emphasize that we set these goals at the beginning of the Black Child Legacy Campaign's launch and that was to decrease African American child deaths across the four focused areas that have the leading causes of child deaths. And those rates are here. I won't duplicate that again, but I think it's really important to share this next slide. Again, as Supervisor Serna mentioned, it's not just that most of these goals were met because of the work of our county partnerships, Black Child Legacy Campaign leaders, there were, three of these areas there were exceeded. The successes were succeeded, the goals were succeeded here, and that includes the 30% reduction in overall African American child deaths, as well as infant sleep-related deaths, child abuse and neglect, and third-party homicide. We have started to focus and really strategize around, due to the infant perinatal conditions and those areas that there were increases, we're definitely strategizing around how we can work to just make sure that those rates are reduced as well. The Black Maternal Health Crisis, we know that today in the United States, mothers, especially Black mothers, are dying at the highest rates in the world here in, in this country. And we know that the rate is 2.9 times the maternal mortality rate for white women. Black women are 2.9 times more likely to die while giving childbirth. Due to this, we place a large focus on maternal health across many of our programs and in here are some. I will say that each CIL also has additional programming to support maternal and infant health within their own programming respectively, based on what the community needs. We'd also like to share some information on Healing the Hood, which is the Black Child Legacy Campaign's Violence Prevention and Interruption Strategy. A large focus area is, you know, beyond being able to intervene when there's already a challenge, the focus is on preventing so that prevention is happening in communities before there needs to be any intervention happening. We're really proud to share that 75% of the, the wraparound support from the Healing the Hood case managers and workers, 75% of that is prevention and 25% is intervention. This means that a high majority of the work that the Healing the Hood workers are doing, they are getting ahead of the challenges, working with youth prior to being, them entering into the system or needing any additional intervention. This is a focus on prevention, but also intervention when necessary. The crisis response model is detailed here. In those, in those cases that we do need an intervention, there is a process for that as well. As an incident happens, there is a dispatch call placed out to the Healing the Hood case managers and community workers, and this allows them to know exactly where to go, what the challenge is, and how they can support the family at that time. In addition to that immediate response, there's also the long-term follow-up and support. This is likely one of the areas that does not get discussed as much about Healing the Hood, but it's beyond just the intervention on the scene. It goes much farther beyond that. It's also long-term follow-up and support. I know I've spoken with CILs who have families who have been on their cases for longer than might be anticipated, but if the support is needed, the CILs always jump in to serve and support families. At the center of the model of the Black Child Legacy Campaign is making sure that we're creating healthy and safe environments for youth to be able to thrive. One thing that's important to mention is that beyond the, the support for youth, this is a whole family involvement, engagement model that includes mentoring and guidance, workforce development, also relationship building with mentors, trusted adults within the community. Here's a quote from one of our Black Child Legacy Campaign incubator leads, and it says that "The Black Child Legacy Campaign goes beyond only supporting children. We serve adults and we reach into families with teenagers, providing them with safe options to navigate this world. We support the pregnant mom with high blood pressure who has a toddler and the first-time mother who does not know where to turn. We work with the whole family to provide a better future for our children." I'll share a bit more about systems change and just the impact of this work. A few of the efforts have included launching the Doula, Black Doula Pilot Program. It's also a huge success that hospitals have adopted Safe Sleep Baby protocols for all births. As Michelle was sharing earlier, every family who is giving birth to a child, taking that child home, gets asked how they plan to sleep their baby. If they do not have a crib or a place to sleep their baby, they leave with one. And that is a really huge win for this community. Also, having Child Protective Services implemented through the Cultural Broker Program, who we were able to hear more about from earlier. And we also recognize that the Black Child Legacy Campaign model and network serves locally as a leader, as well as a national model for how communities can work together to reduce health disparities. These are our, our data for the people who were served and engaged from fiscal year 21 to 2022. There's a total of 4,765 African American residents who received services. And what I will share about a lot of our, all of our community incubator lead sites is that these are the numbers for 4,765 African Americans specifically, but each of the community incubator lead sites serves the people who live in their communities. And this is the number specifically aggregated based on African American services. There are additional people who have also received services through their work. There are additional people who have also received services through their work. And I'd just like to say thank you again and open the floor for any questions that you all may have. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for the presentation. I don't see any supervisors in the queue now, but there might be some questions later. But I do think we have a lot of public comment. And we have, I know we have a few other folks here on hand in case there are questions from the board after we hear from the public, so thank you. Okay, I'll turn it over to you Flo.
Okay, so we have Danielle Lawrence.
Hello Danielle.
Hello, how are you?
Good.
It's good to see my Board of Supervisor. My name is Danielle Lawrence and I am with Mutual Assistance Network. The team behind me is the team that covers Arden Arcade for Black Child Legacy. I wanted to speak to exactly what Julie was speaking about. We have been able to build on Black Child Legacy as a foundation. It acts also as our umbrella. Within, behind me, our staff that hail from Black Child Legacy, but also Strong Families, Strong Generations, which is a home visitation program, under the umbrella and auspices of Black Child Legacy. Also, Black Infant Health. Man is the site that holds Black Infant Health, and we are providing services so those perinatal conditions don't get lost. It was on our radar, it's still on our radar. We have work to do. I'll lastly say and make space for other folks to speak on my team, that we just appreciate your investment and ask that you continue to look forward to, although we've made strides, we definitely know there's more work to be done. So I'll pass it to Heather and then James.
Just really want to quickly acknowledge your continued investment in our efforts and give thanks to that, specifically Mr. Phil Serna, as well as Desmond. And Arden Arcade in North Highlands in particular, the unincorporated areas are even more impacted by disinvestment, and we see that every day in our work. Also, want to amplify the tireless efforts that all of these folks behind us have, continue to do, and it's a beautiful thing to see the impacts of that work, but also a reminder that we have so much more left to do, so please continue to invest in us, and I'll kick it over to James.
Thank you Heather.
Thank you. I just want to thank you all again so much for investing in this Black Child Legacy Campaign, the Healing the Hood work that we do, but also want to amplify what Mrs. Serna said, like, at the end of the day, these aren't just numbers that we're looking at, these are babies, these are young men and women that are dying for different reasons, and so one, even one preventable death is too many. And so, since we know this works, we just got to find ways to make it grow more, because again, one person dying is too many, especially when it's preventable, and not just dying, but also we want to look at the incarceration rate that is tremendously higher for African Americans in our communities, and we want to lower those numbers also, so thank you and let's find some funding.
Good afternoon, Board members. My name is Jackie Rose, and I'm with Rose Family Creative Empowerment Center, and I'm the CIL Lead for Metalview. And our Board of Supervisor's person is Patrick Kennedy, it's good to see you today. I just want to say thank you for the investment that you have made into Black Child Legacy Campaign over the years. I'm going to turn it over to my staff, because they are the ones that do all this work. I do a little bit, but they do most of the work.
Thank you Jackie.
Hello Board, my name is Yolanda Stevenson, I work with Ms. Jackie as the Director of Social Services.
I am Tanya Benifield, I am the Program Manager for BCLC. And I would like to introduce some of our people back here. We have Ms. Karen, she does our intake and our data entry. We have Mr. Earl, he's our Community Intervention Worker. Vincent, he's our CIW in Crisis Response. Ms. Nina Watson is our Building Strong Families Navigator. Ms. Margot is our Culture Broker, what we were talking about earlier. We also have in her absence, Ms. Demetrius Willwright, who represents DHA. Mr. William represents CPS. Wanda Thomas Johnson back there, she represents SETA. Mr. William also represents probation, he's not here. Ms. Toni Johnson also represents Her Health First. And then we also have Ms. Janelle Wright, who is in her absence, who represents Weave.
And I just want to go a little bit over our impact report for July 21st through December. And for 143 African American individuals received intensive case management to reduce the stressors and risk factors that lead to unsafe sleep and the other four focus areas. We have 12 African American pregnant women who received BCLC services, 12 of them which were connected to our prenatal doula coach from Her Health First and Black Mothers United. We had 40 African American individuals and families receive education and referrals, safe sleep practices, parents and grandparents, and 28 individuals received the cribs directly that had gotten the safe sleep baby training. We have 13 African American families with open CPS cases that received BCLC services. 45 African American families received CPS Cultural Broker Services to assist with family reunification. We had 70 families that received housing-related services through BCLC, including referrals for apartment complexes and assisting finding housing. We have over 100 homeless families received assistance through BCLC and other county funded programs. 89% of them homeless families served were successfully housed, and 11% were connected to transitional housing. We have 89 African American individuals who were referred to culturally competent mental health therapists through our Community Responsive Wellness Program partnership with the Behavioral Health Department, and we have our partnership with Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Sierra Two Program. We serve as 1,500 African American families, including other ethnicities in the city and county, who received services through that program, and that was for rental senses and utilities in their 18-month arrears. There was 25 families received through the Problem Solving Access Point Program that we partnership with the Sacramento Steps Forward, who received assistance with deposit assistance, eviction avoidance furniture, and utility assistance. Five of them who maintained current housing, and 20 of them who successfully were housed from previous homelessness. We had 70 families that we received services through our partnership with SETA, CSBG Care Act funding with rent and utilities. 50 African American youth participated in the Kings and Queens Rise Basketball. We had 75 African American youth receive prevention, intervention, and interruption services through City of Sacramento and a plethora of other, because I seen the little time thing go off.
No, you're good, I'm going to exercise some discretion. Please, no, you're fine.
I just want you to see the impact. I got about five more. 60 African American youth were participated in a SAC Youth Works Program and received $500 stipends for their participation. 1,000 American youth participated in positive activities for youth, including after-school programs, summer programs, and community pop-ups. We had 42 at-risk youth receive intense case management through our Healing the Hood Program, and 15 were referred from our probation, and 10 of those youth were successfully completed their minute orders and were removed from probation requirements. 50 at-risk youth that received case management services from juvenile diversion, and 63 African American youth who were referred to competent mental health services through our CRW Program, and then we had 21 crisis that were responded to. So thank you so, so, so much. We had a whole nother page, but you can see the impact.
It feels lonely up there, huh? By yourself?
Nah. Thought I was going to be a solo artist up here for a minute. I was going to be trouble, because I need people behind me to make sure I stay in focus, right? So I have two minutes. All right.
I'm treating these as presentations, so please.
All right, well, appreciate it. No presentations going on here. We've heard a lot of data being talked about today, but you know, as a couple of folks have mentioned, you know, there are people behind those numbers, and just to make sure we emphasize that, especially like the folks that are behind me, you know, we have teams that work and want to make sure that, you know, we acknowledge folks like, you know, Tanya Bean Garrett, who's not here, she's taking a much-needed vacation for her birthday, who was a pillar of our community, and it was around, want to make sure to mention her. Folks like Marcus Smith, who's not here as well, Joseph Thomas, those are a couple of individuals that are out on the streets and working, who are part of our community. And then the folks behind me as well, Diane and Larry, and Brittany, and Melissa Keys, who's not here as well. These are some of the probation and county workers that support our community and who do a great job and help facilitate a lot of the work that gets done inside of our community incubators. So, you know, just emphasizing that this work continues, needs to be done, and to go beyond just finding funding, we need to make this permanent. And it's important to make these programs permanent, because diversion works, diversion works, diversion works, and I'm going to continue to say it, diversion works. So thank you.
And I didn't catch it, Angeline, which CIL are you with?
Brewish Stockton.
Brewish Stockton, thank you.
Samaria? Did I say that right?
You did.
Oh, okay.
Good afternoon, my name is Samaria Bjorkman. I have the honor and privilege of being the fifth and sixth grade director at Liberty Towers. And I was born in Sacramento, well, moved here when I was probably one years old, and my mother was 18, and she had no support, no family, and by the age of seven, I was in the foster care system. I didn't see my mother again until I was 13 years old. So, programs like this make all the difference for children like me. And having the opportunity to be a part of a community that is out here doing the work so that people, little girls and little boys can be with their moms and their dads, is truly something special. And so, this team and these youth are incredible in the work that they're doing, and this program is so important and so impactful, and so I'm going to let you hear from a bunch of them, because they're all on the list.
Hello everybody, my name's Adriana Marshall. I did write a little sum sum, because I can't, okay. Okay, so, good afternoon, Board members, supervisors, fellow community members, and fellow BCLC family, how y'all doing? Thank you guys for the opportunity for us to come and shoot our shot and also share the success stories that came from our families and just from our community in general. We're so blessed to be a part of some amazing work that we've been a part of. Okay, she put up the picture already. So again, my name is Adriana, I'm a Program Coordinator for BCLC Liberty Towers and a youth mentor, and also a family youth resource support case manager. Many years ago, this picture was actually taken in 2019 with me and my friends at the same meeting back in 2019, yeah. And I was a part of this first cohort of teens that was essentially like the Guinea Pigs for Liberty Towers Black Child Legacy Campaign, and me and my friends sat right in like these seats right over here, so this is a really special moment for me, and it's coming back full circle. As a youth from South SAC with a single mom, and I had some brothers in the justice system, I was really determined to seek out what my purpose was. And working with Black Child Legacy at the age of 15, from the age I am now, which is 21, it taught me the importance of like selflessness, and what it means to, we're always talking about change and how we want to see change, and as black folks, it's hard for us to get a seat at the table, and I feel like with Black Child Legacy, with the Black Child Legacy Campaign, it's formed to strengthen families, to make our communities safe, to make our communities united, and to empower those families so that they can start taking ownership, give back, and claim their rightful seat at the table. Sacramento is a city with so much potential, and a lot of our youth have that same potential, but we have to shape that potential, and without these communities, I mean, without these organizations like Black Child Legacy, without having those support systems and those outlets like Black Child Legacy, to guide our families and to break those generational curses and those endless cycles of hopelessness, because we can all agree in this room that a lot of our families are lacking hope. And my hope for this community, being a Sacramento native, is to continue to give youth like myself, like the one that you see in that picture with all my friends, to continue to give youth that sense of finding their purpose, so that they can be the model of their families, and that they could go back and teach their families and generations to come, so this cycle can be broken. We also want to thank Rich Desmond for providing us a space in the heart of our community so that these youth can learn the skills that they need to take the ownership of their community, to give back to their community, and to also claim their rightful seat at the table, like we all have a chance to do. There's a lot of work that needs to be done, but the Black Child Legacy Campaign is a start, and I hope to see these folks that you're going to all hear from, my little baby's right over here. I hope that they are feeling empowered, and that you guys feel empowered by their testimonies to keep funding these programs, because it's very much needed. Like I said, Sacramento is a community with a lot of potential, but we just have to grow and shape that potential. So thank you.
Thank you. By the way, I know where this photo was taken, you don't want to lean back too far on this one.
Hi, my name is Gabriela Gunder, and I've been with Liberty Towers for the beginning of this year. I think that's maybe like around six, maybe eight months, I don't know. Okay, but when I was like really little, maybe like around five or four, I was put into foster care for maybe a couple months because of a couple situations. My mom was in investigation for a crime she didn't commit, and you know, she was not, you know, arrested or nothing, because she was found innocent, and I was back with her. And around maybe age 10, me and my mom, we ended up homeless for around a year and three months. We eventually found a house, but before we found our shelter, we were living in our car for maybe around a couple months, and we had spent all our money on hotels and stuff, and we finally found a house, and that was, and it was a webbed jewel apartment, heck of roaches, it was very heck of roaches, mouse, you know, ugh, I would not suggest it. One out of 10 would not recommend. Anyway, yeah, and then we finally, and my mom, she got a promotion at her job, and now we have a new house currently living in, no roaches or mouse. Uh huh, uh huh. And, wait, hold on, wait, is that it? Okay, cool, well, hold on, I got to say some more stuff. And with Liberty Towers, and it really helped me, you know, to be more happy, and really like, you know, just be like really happy, and I found new friends, and yeah, and they really are like, have really helped with, you know, like helping us through our hard times, like when we were sad about my cousin, and my cousin and his mom going MIA for a while, my mom was really devastated, and you know, she was missing for a while, but now she's back, and the church like really helped us through that, like really like helped us like go through it, held me and my mom when we were crying about her, her missing Christmas, Thanksgiving, my birthday, his birthday, which really was hurt, and the church like really lifted us and really made us more happy.
Right.
Oh wow, I don't know how I can follow that, got to be doing a great job. Hi, my name is Deja, I am currently at USC studying Astronomical Engineering, and, I know, everybody said that, oh. Honestly, I don't know how I got into it either. But most of the time, I'm actually not here, but when I come back and I go to church on Sunday, Paris always comes up to me and says, "I have work for you to do," or she always finds a way to find me and bring me to Impact SAC. And I had the privilege of going to Howard to teach a STEM camp to African children in the DMV area, and it taught me a lot, and one of the questions I was asked was, "Do you truly love black children?" And I think that's a question that all of us should ask ourselves, because you really don't know if you do love black children until you encounter them, until you interact with them. with them. And there was a little girl who lost her twin brother like less than a year ago. And she said during the camp that this was her place where she could go and forget all of that. And it was the, it was the one place where she wasn't treated differently and where she could truly enjoy herself. And I think that program really taught me how to love on black children and how important it is to show them that they have a community where they belong and where they know that they can go to when they have hard times. And I think this is exactly what Impact SAC does or Black Child Legacy does. It's like a home away from home. It gives them a place where they, they can be exposed to what they can do, you know? I didn't even know about Astronomical Engineering until I saw the movie Hidden Figures. So, but being able to teach a STEM camp to African kids and being able to show them what they're capable of and what they can do, and Impact SAC does that with their podcasts and their Chuck Your Weed programs and the SYI programs. And I think it's very important to show kids that they can do whatever they dream of and they're not limited to what's in front of them. And I think that's one of the amazing things that Impact SAC does, not only for me, but for everybody behind me here who's still figuring out what they want to do. And I would just like to say a big thanks to them. Enough it.
Thank you, Deja.
Hello, everyone. My name's Kanye. I'm a youth with the Impact SAC program. I'm a current student at ARC. So, with that, over the summer, actually, I had an opportunity to intern with them and become a photography intern with them. I've been with Impact for about a year now. So, it really changed and changed my life and helped me so much. Really just being able to have a sense of community and like a family and being able to know that I can go in and talk to people about like my mental health or just anything that I need to get off my chest, you know? And I feel like with BCLC, Impact and all their programs that they have, it's a big help within the community because there's a lot of youth that, that do not want to take the next step to go, to talk to someone or to get out there, you know? So, with, with our, with our programs, really, it's just being able to connect with the youth and the community is such a big help. So, yeah.
Okay, Paris.
Hey, everybody. Paris Di. I am a very proud and committed parent representative on the steering committee. My very first time when I was invited by Gina Roberson to hear the presentation on the Blue Ribbon Commission, I found my purpose. And I will never, ever, ever forget you for that. Thank you so much Supervisor Serna. I remember looking at Kendra and I said, I found my life's work and I am committed to this work until the end. Fun fact, on my 2015 application for Liberty Towers to become the incubator lead, there was a question, what is the name of your project? And the name I put on my project was Impact SAC. So, when you hear people talking about Impact SAC, you have to know that it was birthed specifically from the very first application to become the community incubator lead. We love teenagers. Liberty Towers is not the coolest name on the block, so we replace it sometimes with Impact SAC. Just want to say thank you so much. Supervisor Desmond, the youth center is incredible. Thank you so much for that space. We were able to designate a space right in between the liquor store and the laundromat and Dollar General. And we are, we have been well embraced by the neighborhood, the people. They cleaned up the whole walkway of homeless people that used to sleep there. They're no longer allowed to sleep there because there's a youth center in that parking lot. Thank you so much. We revamped a smoke shop and turned it into a youth center. So, I want to say thank you, everybody. Let's continue this amazing work of the Black Child Legacy Campaign.
Thank you, thank you, Paris. But I, I want to say that decision to support that effort up there in North Highlands and Fiddle Farms area was this entire board. So, I want to thank my colleagues as well for, for making that budgetary decision to support that because I think it's already proven to be a wonderful program.
How y'all doing? My name is Diedrick Suggs. I'm from Sacramento. Growing up, we didn't have this. This room is full of people that are passionate about communities, communities that are tied all throughout the city, people that love the work they do no matter what's going on. Like sometimes the work we do brings us a lot of stress and hurt, but we still do it. We still love it. The support is key. These resources are key. Like I said, growing up, we didn't have them and the ones we did have, we lost. Like we had Mr. Roberts. I mean, like, and not that Mr. Roberts does great work, but like he had a heavy job on his hands dealing with us. You need people like Brother Shakur Nam, like Clemmie Fields, you need Jaditas, Ms. Deborah Cummings, the Margos, the Mr. Kings, you need everybody, the Perrises. Like without this work, without these collaborations, this network of resources for these people will continue to be the next thing on the news.
Okay, so we're to Jadia or Jadaiah? Jadia? Y'all not going to leave me here by myself. So, I'm going to share a little bit personally and then I'll hand it over to my team. My name's Jadita Gomes. I'm with the Greater Sacramento Urban League and we house the CIL in Oak Park. I've been before you as a community advocate, as a service provider, but today I wanted to highlight an experience that I had as a black woman. So, during the pandemic, I had an incident and also had an injury because of that incident. Following my incident, there was a delay of care because my care providers didn't believe the severity of my injury and of my pain. Because of that, I am still experiencing some of the repercussions from my injury. I say that to say, to bring some humanity and to bring a picture of the folks that we actually serve. I am college educated. I earn a livable wage. I know where the resources are and oftentimes I know who to talk to and yet I experienced injustice here in the county of Sacramento. And so, yeah, just wanted to bring that up so that we would remember that the need, that the discrepancies are not a thing of the past, that they are still happening. And in times like the pandemic or during summers when things get a little bit hot, that our community experienced the disparities, they experienced the need for these services all the more. And so, I would like to bring my story, but I'm sure it's the story of many others, single parents, single moms, that need continuous support and continuous commitment. The work that we do is super important, but when there is a gap in the work that we do, the impact is astronomical. And so, just wanted to share that and bring some humanity because the numbers are real. But I think sometimes we forget that there are people behind the numbers and that they exist. And so, yeah, thank you for your time. And I'm just going to yield to my amazing team if they have anything else to add.
Thank you.
Good afternoon, everyone. My name's Bobby. I'm the program manager here in Oak Park for BCLC. I just kind of wanted to share a little bit about my story. I moved here escaping violence to Sacramento. And just becoming a part of BCLC in general, I was introduced to my first therapist, to my first mentor. I'm blessed to say that my mentor and my mentee are sitting here in this room today. So, I've, even though that I'm working in this space, I'm, I've also received service in this space. So, it's super important to keep the work going. Thank you for your time.
Good afternoon. My name is Clemmie Fields. I just wanted to say that I'm very, very proud of everybody that's in this room, that if you'd have knew me back in the day, you would be surprised even to see me at this podium. I helped dirty up my neighborhood, but now I have a chance to clean it up and I'm doing all the best I can.
The rest can find the mic. Good afternoon, everybody. My name is Rodney Bryant. First, let me say that I am privileged and honored to be in this setting. I'm a returning citizen, 30 years incarceration, finding my way back to the city that I migrated to from back east and seeing that there's work to be done. I found my passion, like what my colleague says, this is my life's work now. During those dark periods of incarceration, I seen a lot of the youth come into those situations blind, deaf and dumb and completely hopeless. I've been that, that light for them on the inside. I'm a youth mentor, youth coach for over 20 years. I've come home, I've been, I discharged parole June 18th. That's six years of staying focused and on a path. And I want the youth to have that same kind of focus when they find themselves in a place of darkness and desperation. For me, being here is life changing because I see the good work that everybody is doing and that I know that I've been on the right path because like minds always congregate. And I look around and I see that I'm in a good place and where I should be. I've also had the privilege to mentor the youth in Yolo County, YDF, DJJ while it was still open. And I've even gone up to Pine Grove and mentored in the, the youth fire camps. But like everything else in life, you have to transform and move on to bigger and better things. And I find myself here. And this work is truly inspiring to see that they have the support of the county board who believes in, in their mission and in their life's work. So, I continue to say that this program is life changing, life saving and life giving. This is not only a program that is beneficial here in Sacramento, all of California is watching. And if all of California is watching, you know, the rest of the nations, the rest of the nation is watching. Let's continue to build on this. Let's continue to make this permanent and give it life and support it so it can continue to allow the children to be the future that we say they are. Thank you.
All right. Our county workers act like they don't, they're amazing, but we'll just let them go ahead and cheer.
Good afternoon, board. Good afternoon, everybody behind me. I am Deborah Cummings. I am a person that wear two hats. First hat, I am a steering committee member from the ground up. Make no mistakes about it. I wear that and I wear it well. Number one, I am boots to the ground. That means I'm committed. Number two, I have skin in the game. And number three, I ride hard for what I do for Black Child Legacy. My second hat is the co-lead. I stand here by myself because me and the lead, we always tag team everything. He's out in the field doing what he do and he know I'm good at doing what I do. So, I stand before you today as a co-lead of what you see back here with crisis response healing the hood. What you need to know is, a lot of people come for me in this seat at Black Child Legacy, not only as a steering committee member, but as a black woman. I am tired of watching family, not just community family, but my coworkers. We bury, we lose, we die. Who helps us in our mental state? Who helps pull the daggers out of our backs? Because we're riding boots to the ground for families, children, adults, that we sometimes don't even know who has us. I know one person that has me. And I say one person because we are a family and that's who you see back here. I make no mistake about who I am. I am boots to the ground. I take it to the max, seven days a week. There's no turn time. There's no get rest time. My rest is to see who you see out here, families elevate. My rest is to see we lower the rates in everything we represent. I make no mistakes. I am a advocate for third party homicide, but also, if it wasn't for Jadita's crew, Arden Arcade's crew, Ms. Jackie Rose's crew, for assisting me in burying my nephew's first child, and he is all of 31, just got married by Marcus Allen on Valentine's Day for the whole Sacramento to watch. These are the families that we serve. And I am here for 11 years. My brother was murdered too. My mom died at my house because she had none of these services. I take the daggers in my back from people that don't know my story because I believe in the vestment that you guys made. But what I want you to understand is, us workers, we lose. Us workers, we have mental issues. Us workers, we use the resources that we push out here every single day to these families. What we need to understand and what you need to understand is, we need you to keep going with this work we're working. And I'm not going to make no mistakes about what I do. I'm not. I am a CAP member for the SETA Board. Thanks to Sierra Health, thanks to Black Child Legacy, thanks to the community, thanks to me believing in me. I want to see more for Sacramento. This is the only program that you see people come out, you see people run up to us. Could you tell us about Black Child Legacy? I've never heard a community in Del Paso Heights say, they want me to come speak to talk about the Stop the Bleed campaign. Not where I come from. I don't have 24 hour security. I am the security. Okay? Remember that when we come back year after year after year. I've been here too, from day one. I am here. I am a very passionate person because my mom did not get the service. And I'll tell you again, I got daggers in my back daily, but I'm BC rooted. Black Child Legacy, 25 A.
Good afternoon.
Stand to support.
Thank you. Good afternoon. Thank you again for this opportunity, board supervisors. The reason my name is so long on that list is because I was not going to say anything. But if I didn't say anything, Mr. and Mrs. Roberts, we're going to have my neck and I might have lost my job. So, I'm here. And if you know them, you know, I'm probably right about it. So, when I first got attached to the Black Child Legacy Campaign, I actually was a county employee, actually was a county employee with Department of Human Assistance for six years. And so, I became acquainted with the program then and actually got the chance to be the DHA representative for my neighborhood for a while. But then I made the decision, much to my wife's being upset, to make the transition from the county to coming over and working for Roberts Family Development Center, but working for the Black Child Legacy Campaign as a program manager. But the reason I did that is because of the fact that I realized... realized that in order to really address something such a daunting task, which is the situation we have in our communities with African-American child deaths, it takes collaboration. Like, we're not able to do it. We have many great community-based organizations that are represented here today, but we can't do it alone. The only way for it to work is we have to have the collaboration. I know people keep mentioning that many times, collaboration, collaboration. That's the beauty of the Black Child Legacy Campaign. It's the collaboration between you all, the board of supervisors, our county partners, and us as CBOs and community-based organizations within our communities to get this work done and really to serve our community. And so I just want to say thank you all for your continued support, and encourage you all to continue to support us. Let's make this permanent. Let's continue to keep this going strong because we are making an impact. We are getting the work done. The numbers are dropping. Families are being served. They're being connected to services and resources. And I believe that we're on the right path. Let's keep it up. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's me again. I left with a lot of information for you all, but I would be remiss of not mentioning of this really last page that I realized that was very important of, we, Black Child Legacy is great, and I love it, but we cannot be as effective as we are today without our Sacramento County partners. I'm talking about Department of Human Assistance. I'm talking about CPS. I'm talking about Sacramento Employment Training Agency, and also our probation. Having that collective together has made us rock and has made us be a shining star within Sacramento, and nobody's doing it like us. So with that being said, I want to finish a little bit of these numbers that these agencies helped us produce to assist these families. With collaboration with the CPS, Sacramento County, and SHRA, they passed down some funding of over $135,000 worth of assistance. We provided over 100 families, and you guys know about the housing right now. We provided 100 families for housing stability. We gave services, including with that money that we had with our collaboration with CPS, is with eviction avoidance, utility assistance, and deposit assistance. If you would have seen the faces on those families when they walked into their houses for the first time, being two, three years of chronic homelessness, it was amazing. The other one is we have a collaboration with United Way. We serviced over 111 families that receive access to free laptops, computers, and Wi-Fi hotspots through our partnership with United's Way Digital Equity Program. We have also serviced African-American families with our family support services, with diapers, wipes, food cards, Uber cards, laundry cards, bus passes, and direct family support services. And our Department of Human Assistance, Ms. Dee Dee Wheelwright, serviced at least 320 African-American families that receive services through human assistance worker that stationed at our incubator, with some of her caseload and the families that was touched coming through our incubator that she assisted us with. We had over 143 African-American families receive multidisciplinary team services and assistance for our very own William Lyman CPS informal supervision social worker who was stationed also at our incubator. We had over 45 African-American individuals receive employment-related services from our center worker, Ms. Wanda Thomas, who's stationed at our incubator. And over 65% of those individuals gained successful employment and resumes that they can take on for other things. With that being said, we had 75 youth adult community services and five gun violence community listening sessions. And then, lastly, one of my families wanted to come and be here to do a testimony of her experience, but she was not able to do so. So I wanted to just read that of what she sent me. Her name is Phyllis Johnson. "I just want to thank you and Black Child Legacy for all you do. Ms. Yolanda, when I came to the program, I didn't expect a lot, maybe some counseling and advice. I tell you, I was shocked by the care and love and concern that you personally gave us. I came in as a bitter, broken mother, ready to give up. I felt defeated and not able to do anything about the horrible situation my 15-year-old pregnant and runaway, being sex-trafficked daughter was. Felt like I was stuck in a nightmare, couldn't get help from the police, the school, or anywhere. Ms. Yolanda, you sat down and listened to me, and then you got busy. You pulled resources out of nowhere. You had the police, social workers, school administration, healthcare workers, and a lot of jump in and out of all made me feel like there was hope. You were with us through vandalism, threats, intimidation, and so much more." She says, sorry, I'm getting a little emotional on this one. "Ms. Yolanda, I truly believe that if it wasn't for God bringing you into our lives, we would not have made it. If I truly think that I would be dead or in jail," and that's a fact, "that's how desperate our situation was. I thank God for you, and I thank God for all the hard work and kindness and caring. You are truly a wonderful person, and thank you for being with Black Child Legacy."
Thank you, Yolanda. So that concludes our public comment in chambers. I'd please ask you to stick around for a few moments. I think we do have a few.
Ma'am, I'll let you, I'll give you two minutes. Come up to the microphone so we can hear you. We can't hear you very well.
Okay, the legacy means dead, from here, the present, to the past. They are not dead. They are here alive, and they have their needs based on their own money, their own income they have earned from living on this land from the very beginning. This is their continent. Okay? Period. 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 And you're not listening to her when she's talking. And you, Blanca, you're not listening either. Get that wig off. And you, from England, you're not listening either.
Okay, ma'am, ma'am, if you have comments, I'm not, we're not gonna listen to just criticism of the board members.
So you can understand me better. And you're Richard Desmond, Desmond, Desmo, not French, German. You're German. That's what you're, you're from, you have a slight accent. I can hear it. We can hear it. Those have good hearing aids. See, that confirms others. And that one's using, instead of doing the white, blonde, rather blonde, fat, brown hair.
Okay.
In the information she's using herself, she's sending.
Ma'am, we can't hear you unless you stand in front of the microphone.
Is that legal to send information? Well, if she's sending it, if it's to the public, they should hear it. She's sending it to all churches, which would, you see, R.C. You feel uncomfortable with that. Are you also Duke? Are you Duke too? You're saying no right away? And you're Duke? You're vice, vice, what do you call him? Vice?
Okay, wrap up your comments, please, ma'am.
You're second in line? Kennedy, Patrick Kennedy? Thank you. Get real. You're alive and your future is in tell you this is your.
Okay, ma'am. Excuse me, your time is up. Your time is up.
Thank you. Can you please, please be seated? Your time is up. Thank you. Okay, let's go to.
We do not have any phone calls. I'm gonna close the queue.
Okay. Okay, well, I, I'll turn to Supervisor Serna first.
Thank you, Ms. Chair. Well.
Disrupted the flow.
Hey, you know, it happens. So I said what I wanted to say earlier, but what I didn't emphasize is that I'm a 2XL, so if there's a box of shirts back there, thank you, thank you.
We're charging $5.
Hey, it's fine.
Supervisor Hume.
Yeah, I won't take long. I just wanted to say it's tough to listen and pick out whose story is more inspiring about all the people that came to the podium. And it's just incredible how filled with gratitude I am right now for hearing so many people who are pouring into their community. And if only more of the world did that, we would be in a far better place than we are right now. And so God bless you for the work that you do.
And I'll just, I'll just follow that up. It's, you've got to be made of stone if you're not moved by so many of you, and your stories serve you. And the young people especially, thank you for coming and sharing your stories. And I just want to stand and give you a round of applause from us up here. Thank you. And also a shout out to Supervisor Serna, because I know his leadership in helping set up the Black Child Legacy Campaign, and your work, and the support that this board continues for this effort is just, just amazing. And this really exemplifies the good work that we can do in Sacramento County, and that we will continue to do with all of your help and effort and leadership. So thank you. Okay, so we will move on to our nominations, right? Madam Clerk?
Yeah. So for item 65, you are continuing to August 8, the Community Review Commission, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee. You're continuing to August 22, the Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Commission on the Status of Women and Girls. Continuing to September 12, the Building Board of Appeals, County Service Area 4B Slough House, Wilton, Kasumnas, County Service Area 4C Delta, Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, Elk Grove, Kasumnas Cemetery District, and the In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee. And for your matters today, you have the Civil Service Commission. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to September 12.
Okay. And Mr. Kennedy?
Reappoint Noah Painter.
Okay. And then we have the Disability Advisory Commission.
Chiefs recommend continuing to August 8.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee.
Chiefs recommend continuing to August 8.
First five commission.
Chiefs recommend reappointing Stephen Wertz and Eric Fernandez-Garcia. Continue the remainder to September 12.
Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Advisory Board.
Continue to August 22.
North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to September 12.
And Mr. Desmond?
Continue to August 22, please.
And Ms. Frost?
Please continue to August 8.
Okay. And then we have the Public Financing Authority of the County of Sacramento Metro Air Park Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District.
Chiefs recommend continuing to August 22.
Public Health Advisory Board.
Continue to August 8.
Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board.
Chiefs recommend nominating Javon Williams and Dr. Ariel Place, and continue the remainder to August 22.
Okay. And then last but not least, Sacramento, South Sacramento Area Community Planning Advisory Council. Mr. Serna?
Please continue to September 12.
And Mr. Kennedy?
Please reappoint Joe Smith.
Thank you, sir. Okay. And when would you like to continue the remainder?
September 12.
September 12?
Yes.
Okay. Almost forgot my own district. I live in your district. Okay, so that concludes your nominations.
Okay. County exec comments.
Well, I just want to thank the Black Child Legacy Campaign folks that are still here. I was on one of the very first committees as this was being established. And to hear from all of you, you're just so profoundly inspirational, and the work you do is great. And I just wanted to take an opportunity to, having been there when it started, and see where you are now, it's quite remarkable. So thank you all.
Thank you. Thank you. And next supervisor comments, I don't see any. So that concludes our business for today, and we are adjourned.